The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do we want to start with the motion to bring these guys in?
If you'd like me to.
I would like to start for remote access people.
I would like to make a motion to approve the remote attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Fourth Ward Alderman Dick Potter, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Seventh Ward Alderman Mike Waldron, Alderman at Large Sonia Berg at the Committee of the Hall and the City Council meeting of April 14, 2020.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Williams. I don't think we have any discussion on this type of motion, do we Dirk? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you everyone for joining remotely and thank you for Moyer and Williams joining here in person. On this evening, I just wanted to remind everybody, if you make a motion or a second, would you please declare who you are because it's a little bit harder when you're doing it remotely for me to actually make the motion and I want to make sure it's accurate. So this evening, we're going to begin with an appointment and it's my appointment. I'd like to make a recommendation to the Rock Island County Board Chairman Richard Brunk to reappoint the Mayor Stan Leach as our representative on the Rock Island County Joint Animal Control Board for an additional full three-year term effective May 31st, 2020. And it's a little bit informative, but I'd also like to have a concurrence of counsel.
Mayor, I think that's my.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's March 31st, forgive me. We had a motion by, I'm sorry.
Parker.
Parker, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Alderman Moyer gave me a second here, so we have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this appointment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. The second item is a proclamation from Darren Galt, Chief of Police, to declare April 19th through the 25th, 2020 as Crime Victims Rights Week. Chief Galt, is there anything you'd like to? Or Janine, do you want to read the proclamation?
Would I be okay if I read it first?
Sure.
I'll just abbreviate it somewhat. Whereas in 18, I'm sorry, whereas in 1982, the President's Task Force on Victims of Crime envisioned a national commitment to more equitable and supportive response to victims. Whereas this commemorative week celebrates the energy, perseverance, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas the City of Moline is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for a better future for all victims and survivors. Especially, Mayor of Moline does hereby proclaim the week of April 19th through the 25th, 2020 as Crime Victims Rights Week.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Certainly an honor to stand before you and recognize Crime Victims Rights Week. And in all honesty, that's why police do this job, is because we're here to bring justice, to protect our citizens, and to be there in their times of need. And I'd like to invite you to watch a short video, it's about two minutes, from Melody Williams, who was the Victims Assistant at the Rock Island County State's Attorney's Office, who'd like to say a few words about the importance of Crime Victims Rights Week.
My name is Melody and I am one of two Victims Assistants at the Rock Island County State's Attorney's Office. The theme of National Crime Victims Rights Week this year is seek justice, ensure victims' rights, and inspire hope. At the State's Attorney's Office, we work alongside one another to ensure justice for victims by letting victims decide what it is justice means to them, whether that be a guilty verdict, the opportunity to be heard and validated, or to be compensated for their losses. The Victim Services Department walks alongside victims of crimes throughout the prosecution of the criminal case. We inform them of their rights to be present, to be notified, to be protected, and treated with respect, as well as the means to assert their rights before the court. In doing so, victims are provided with a platform to be seen and heard by the criminal justice system. When necessary, we help victims respond to other needs related to the crime. We refer victims to community partners for things like counseling, medical needs, sheltering and housing services, financial assistance, and other means of planning for the safety and protection for themselves as well as their families. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you all. Your participation in honoring crime victims and those that assist and advocate on their behalf inspires hope in victim services providers. Your support helps ensure the continued evolution and strengthening of crime victims' rights and the building of a stronger community therein. If you or someone you know has a question about victim services at the State's Attorney's Office, please call 309-558-3250 or visit rockislandcounty.org/statesattorney/home.
Thank you, Chief Galt. We're now at questions on the agenda, and just for housekeeping, I'd like to have feedback from our remote attendees. Could you hear Chief Galt okay when he spoke at the podium? Was better this week? Good. Got a bunch of.
Yes, good.
Okay. And then you're doing all right hearing the people here. You can hear me okay and the other?
Yes.
Okay. If you do have any problems, please don't hesitate to draw our attention to it because we're unaware of it. So I think that there was a point in the meeting last time that one of the Aldermen later disclosed to me that there was a bunch of feedback. Please feel free to interrupt the meeting. We want to make sure that you can hear what's going on and you're comfortable. Are there any questions on the agenda? Hearing none, we will go into the agenda items. The first item is towing agreement. Chief Galt.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight, I have the towing agreement for 2020. The Police Department solicited sealed bids to provide towing service for the City of Moline. We received one response from Quad City Towing. That is actually our current contract holder. It was awarded in 2017. We bid these out every three years. March 19th, we put this, or I'm sorry, March 18th, we put this out for bid. We received only the one bid and I reviewed it and found that it is the most reasonable and acceptable to the Police Department, and so staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. The next item is amendment to Chapter 4 of the Moline Code of Ordinances pertaining to single-serving sales. Dirk Kreis.
Thank you, Mayor. In the context of rolling out the single-serve ordinance about a minimum size of packaged liquor sales, we came across a little bit of confusion out there because all of your consumption-on-the-premises licensees are also able to sell packaged goods. And so there was some question about whether sitting at the bar, you had to be served four beers instead of one because if they were served in the original packaging as opposed to in a glass. So for clarity's sake and since we have the time and since nobody's consuming on the premises, we took the moment to clarify the ordinance with the amendment before you today.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
That motion carries. Thank you, Dirk. The next item is remote attendant, sorry, remote attendance and public comment. Dirk Kreis.
So the, as part of the safety net around the actions we're taking for these kinds of remote attendance meetings that we're having, we've already gotten a few court cases giving us guidance about how these are conducted in days of COVID and the Open Meetings Act. The courts have been very understanding in terms of the meetings, but they've looked at things like have you adopted a policy? Are you properly recording the minutes? Are you properly recording the meetings? Have you sort of backfilled around the fact that we don't have a physical courtroom? Again, all of this is around the fact that the Governor gave us relief instead of the legislature giving us relief. And so while the courts have been understanding, they are looking for indicia that we're trying to be formal about it and that we have actual plans and processes in place. So for that reason, and further to guide the other bodies of the City of Moline, the commissions, committees that meet, we thought we needed to adopt this. This helps give everybody some bit of an instruction manual. City Council's been quite accomplished at doing this, but others are going to start to do it. And so we're recommending approval of this policy. It's temporary. When the Governor's order goes away, the temporary meeting policy goes away.
Parker, motion to approve. Second.
So I heard a motion to approve, but I didn't catch the name of that Alderman.
David Parker.
Alderman Parker had a motion and second here with Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Was there one nay vote? I'm sorry, I just want to clarify. Those are all ayes? Okay. Unanimous aye. Thank you, Dirk. The next item is the COVID-19 Budget Impacts and Adjustments. J.D. Shelty and Carol Barnes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to step over there. I think that mic works better.
Okay.
Getting a little feedback on my end here.
Thank you. Did you mute everybody? J.D., go ahead.
So I, um.
Could you, we're muting you Carol, but if you could turn down your microphone a little bit? Or sorry, your speakers just a smidge? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, but we're going to need Carol to be able to talk because she's helping with the presentation. Carol, we're unmuting you now so that you can speak up as part of the presentation.
So Don, did you, did you load that PowerPoint that Randy sent you? Did you pop that up there, please?
We're taking a minute to get to the PowerPoint.
My screen just went to gray scale.
Yep.
Thank you, Don. If you, go ahead and just flip the first slide, please. Sorry about the feedback. Step back away if I need to.
Were we emailed this presentation? Maybe we can just look at it on our computers at home?
I was going to share it. Give me just a second.
It's being shared, Don. It's up on the screens. You all can see it on the screens, right? We will email it out to.
No, we think you cannot see it yet. There we go. It's really small, though. Is there a possibility you could email it to us? I mean, having this in advance would be very helpful.
I don't, I don't have it. Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't get it either, but Don, do you?
Can I see it now? It should be fairly.
Can you guys see it? What's it look like on your screens?
It's really small, my screen.
Smaller than a note card.
One moment. And once he gets into the presentation, we'll have Don email it out. You have email access, don't you, Don?
Yes.
We'll make sure that we get everything out to you ahead of time in the future.
Well, I, it would. This is about 10. Carol just finished at about 10.
Finished at 10:20?
Yeah. I can, I'll email it out to you.
Are you guys still looking?
Yes.
Which screen's getting shared? This screen being?
Screen, this screen.
I can see it now.
Hi, J.D.
Okay, can I have the next slide, Don? Everybody can see it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, I know Carol shared some of this information with all of you last week and I wanted to walk through because I don't, I'm not sure if everybody captured what she had talked about when she did her modeling and she did her example of how much there were different numbers used and some of them I don't think were clear when they correlated to the general fund versus like capital improvement fund and that. So tonight, my conversation with you is concentrating on the general fund and the different shortfalls that we anticipate that we're going to see, and then some of the expenditure cuts that we've made, some of the different adjustments that I'm going to talk to you about after our conversations yesterday. I think some of the things that you wanted to see me working on through my efforts today and the work that I've done today on that, I guess, and then to tell you kind of where we're at now and what I think our next steps are going to be. So to start out with, I wanted to talk to you about this $3,572,261,000 shortfall on the revenue side. And if you remember, when Carol first started this, she, she went through and they did their forecasting, they did their anticipation of what we were going to see with the current stay-at-home order, the different reductions that we've seen in our sales tax revenues, our home loan sales tax, and how that's going to impact Moline and the way we look at our different revenue streams. I think Carol said that it's probably going to be overall about 52 different revenue funds. This anticipates a slowdown that's going to continue to go down through the end of June and then a slow, a ramp back up through September, and then the effects of this on back to where we don't climb out until the end of 2020. The $636,000 that you see next to that is actually the net after the $1.3223,108 worth of cuts that we made. You can see the less expenditure cuts to date in the yellow. But what happened is we had prepaid, if you remember, in 2019, we prepaid P-25 expenditures for March of 2020. And so the audit adjustment is making those come back out. So you see that $374,000 entry, 236. Like I say, that's an audit adjustment. And then what we are doing is planning on in these expenditures, we know some of them haven't been realized yet, but we anticipate that we will have additional overtime in the Police Department. We're going to have additional overtime in the Fire Department, and we're going to have other, you know, expenses related to additional work we're doing in the buildings for cleaning and materials and supplies and that because of COVID-19. We're categories, categorizing all that, and we've got anticipated about $311,900 with expenses right now related to the pandemic. Now, we'll be recovering $233,925 of that through FEMA. Every indication says that we'll get that and we've anticipated that on the, on the other side of this that will recapture that 75%. So does everybody follow that so far? So then our net.
I didn't, I didn't quite follow that. So I'm looking at the expenditures column, the $636,000 is the additional expenditures because of COVID-19?
No, part of it's the audit adjustment for P-25 because we paid the P-25 in 2019, but it was, it's going to have to look like a P-25 because we prepaid it. And that's $374,236. And then $311,900 is what we think are going to be COVID-19 expenses.
Oh, and then you said something about $270,000 would be reimbursed?
That's, $233,009 will be our 75% recoverable.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, the $311.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. So then it brings home that expenditure down then from $2020 to $45,260.
So you have a breakdown of what $1.3 million expenditure cuts to date are?
Yes.
Yes, we have. And it's about, I think Carol said it's 80 pages of line item detail, but yeah, we have that. I want to go to the next line. Alderman Went, if I could, I'll go to the next slide and I'll probably drill down into that a little deeper. So when we bring in that, that $1.3 million that we were talking about, it brings our shortfall then in the general fund on what we anticipate with the revenues, the $3.5 million that we anticipate is, we're going to come in short on the revenue side. And then the different expenditures, we still have $2.9 million shortfall. And so some of the conversations that we had yesterday, and I appreciate everybody on such short notice getting together and giving me some really, really good clear direction on the efforts that you wanted me to be working on. And obviously, I've immersed myself in most of this today to get us to the point where I can, I can give you some suggestions, I guess, on where I think we need to be going. The, the reserve values that I think we talked about, we talked about Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and Phase 4, and I've concentrated on the stuff in Phase 1 that we talked about yesterday. And, and so we've looked at the different reserve values and obviously the general fund reserve of $11,784,493 from last year. At the end of 2019, Carol's projecting that that's where we're going to see the, you know, the biggest impact from this if we're, if we're going to see a $2.9 million shortfall. And with the liability fund, Carol, I'll get that in a second. Carol looked up, our cash balances there. And we're looking at about $6.3 million in cash in the liability fund, about $3.1 in the fleet fund, and about $1.4 million in the facilities fund. And so some of the questions from you yesterday were to have Carol and I take a look at what we think are adequate fund balances in those different, the equities in those three internal service funds. And we're going to be working on giving you that because we don't currently like have a policy. We use an actuary, as you well know, for the liability fund. And we don't have this year's actuary report for that. I think we do that one actually every other year. And in the fleet and facilities fund, we usually use that as a percentage of our depreciated value of those assets in reserves. And so we will bring to you what Carol and my recommended minimum fund balances are in those three funds here over the next week or week and a half. The other work I know that you wanted to see me working on, you know, beginning this morning, was to be looking at non-core and the things that we could possibly look at that aren't absolute, I guess, essential services. And I, not essential, big E, little e, but just what we're talking about, non-core. And, you know, some of the, some of the specific things that we talked about yesterday and as I've gone through and kind of done my work, I've anticipated that different topics we talked about, like street sweeping and alley grading, maybe limiting our mowing in rideways, maybe doing more rough cut mowing in the parks departments rather than doing, you know, turf grass level type, type mowing. You know, we have 40 restrooms in parks, probably not opening the restrooms in parks and then limiting our necessity to go out and do kind of maintenance there. Street sign maintenance, rather than doing street sign maintenance and wholesale comprehensive exchange, you know, for retro reflectivity, we probably only do emergency sign repairs. Looking at different things like support services being shared between different departments for core services. I think Alderman Went, you gave me a really good example of some of the things that you were looking at in support staff over in your areas. Some of the other things that I, I realize that I respect my role with regard to the folks in both the Parks Autonomous Board and the Library, but I felt like as I was going to be looking at talking to you folks about maybe including them as part of the solution, I told them when I looked at this overall with the roughly $45 million in the, in the general fund budget and where these shortfalls come from, I would be looking at them to be some part of a solution that brought them in to a kind of a composite rate of somewhere in that 5% neighborhood. And so taking a look at that, I talked to the Park Board President today and the Director of Parks and Recreation. I explained to them, you know, my logic behind this and in advance of this too, and I, and I didn't mention this in the meeting yesterday in detail, but they have already found $1.1 million worth of cuts to take out of the expenditure side of their ledger. And I think it's important to mention that because it's not all capital. They've gone and done some scaling back on operational activities, which, you know, when the Mayor and I talked about this early, she said those are the things that are going to perpetuate the, the recovery, you know, into subsequent years. Cutting capital doesn't work, but they also understand and talking to the Park Board President, and I won't speak for him, you know, he'll have an opportunity to speak for himself. I know they're going to meet next week, but he understands the optics of trying to move forward with a project like the pickleball court right now. And maybe it's better to maybe postpone a project like that where they can, can still get the momentum for fundraising, but yet put it off into, you know, a future budget year. And so he understood completely. Actually, he was very graceful and very understanding and said he thinks it's more than fair what I'm talking to him about doing and, and that he actually felt like this needed to be done. Talked to the, as I talked to the Library Director and, and talking to him as well, he understands the gravity of the situation. And I offered to visit with the Park Board or the Library Board President myself and, and he said that he would take the responsibility of having that conversation with, with the President and the Library Board. But, you know, I explained to him that I had sent an email to Dirk and the Mayor probably about almost two weeks ago now, as they were talking about, you know, the different limitations with possibly doing something different with our appropriations ordinance and how it relates to the levy. And I explained to them that I went back last year before we introduced the budget to you folks and asked you to consider adopting it. And I presented this $414,825 transfer from General to the Library as more of a line of credit or an advance that I would offer up and provide if they needed it towards the end of the budget year and, and that's a balance. That transfer hasn't been made yet, and in my conversations with, with Dirk, he's telling me, and I don't want to make this sound too simple, but as we look at these $1.3 million worth of cuts, which, which by the way, will grow and I'll talk to you about that in a minute, but as we look at some of these different cuts and, and that, and bringing these forward, then we would just make that adjustment of recapturing that $414,825 to the Library and we just pull that back as part of our budget adjustment that we'd be making. The Library is going to be a little bit more difficult, but it can be done a couple different ways. So the conversation I had with John, or with Alderman, excuse me, with President Cock today was, was a very, very good conversation and I think they're going to work with us on whether they need to just make that refund or a transfer back from their reserves. And, and I assured him, I understand that if their capital projects are part of the, some of the things that they're going to delay, that we'd, we'd be sensitive to that because they're probably going to want, want to launch those capital projects next year. The next one, I actually want to skip over the next one and, and talk about the, the one, I don't know, Dirk, is that in blue? The one in blue down there where we talk about reduction in workforce and reduction in hours. And I put a number in there that I've been working on through last night and most of the day today. And, and that's where, when I'm talking to you about some of those non-core services and, and that, where I would capture that $656,757. And I'm, I'm planning on getting out tomorrow and starting to talk to the different departments about what that looks like, where it comes from, and how we implement that and the strategy moving forward. I appreciate the input that you all gave me on how you want to see that and some of the different, you know, things that you'd be willing to maybe continue to consider extending to the employees, you know, and that as we try and work through some of that. And so it gives me a little bit better understanding about what we'll be able to accomplish in that arena. So going back to that $1.3 million, that, that dollar amount, as Carol was going through and building her model on the revenue side, she, she wanted to anticipate at the same time what we could see on the revenue, on the expenditure side of the ledger. I'm sorry. on the expenditure side of the ledger, I'm sorry. And so that cut was made early on, and that 1.3 million will, will be bigger. And I haven't, as you remember, you know, Carol was put in charge of doing the, the financial modeling and the initial part of it as I was still working on the human resources and the pandemic side of the, of the challenge and building our continuity of operations plan. And so I've only got into the financial stuff starting on last Thursday. But, you know, some examples, April 1 was when that 1.3 million budget was punched together. And, and as you all well know, at that point in time, we didn't have the hiring freeze. So for example, we still had a captain recruiting, we have a captain who you see in the police department, so I still left money, I still left money in the budget for a captain's test. And so now I'll go back and I'm going to take another dive into the budget. And that 1.3 will expand and we'll be cutting more expenses out of the budget with examples like that. Landscape's changed a lot in two weeks. So not taking anything more than out of those other internal service funds that I talked to you about the balances, not taking anything out of, you know, we prepaid 754,000 into next year's pension obligations. If you remember right, we did the Lauderbach and Amon recommendation instead of the statutory recommendation. And so we put 754,000 into prepaid pension obligations. At this point in time, I'm not proposing that we scale any of that back. And so if we don't do any of that, then just with hitting these different levers right here, there'd still be a 1.3 million dollar drawdown to general fund reserves. Sitting at about 89 days right now, you can see that would bring our general fund reserve balance down to 80 days and about 22% of our, of our expenditures to reserves. So the, the work I'd like to do, I guess, over the next couple of weeks is continue on the list of what you gave me to work on. I would probably activate immediately, working with the department directors on implementation of this, this reduction in workforce and continue to look at other areas and strategies where we can try and make some of that come together. I would examine the budgets again with the departments while Carol, she's got to immerse with the auditors. I know that they've got six of them right now that she's trying to serve six of them. And I've been stealing most of her passive these last couple of days. But I'm going to, I'm going to let her get back and give them her undivided attention while I'm meeting with the departments to take a deeper dive into these cuts on the expenditure side. The, the next thing I would be doing is working with Dirk and trying to figure out the possibility of either recapturing the levy from the, from the park side of it, or just working with them before they meet. So we can give them a recommendation on the 23rd when they meet on how we would want to recapture back that 529,000 from the park board reserves. And then the last thing is, is working to get you those adequate fund balances for the liability fund, for the fleet fund, and then for this facilities fund. At that same time, Your Honor, obviously, I'm going to be working on getting with HR and with Allison and starting to meet with the folks in the bargaining unit and talk, and they call it impact bargaining, but then we'd have to impact bargaining on how the effects of a reduction in force apply to the different contracts.
Before we move forward with execution, there's some information I don't quite understand. And it may be obvious to the other council members, but this is, this is like phase two of the original proposal, but I don't know how it all adds up together. That's the gap I'm missing. So the 80 line items that, that I think you're assuming that I understand, I don't understand. So do we have some information that would populate our understanding of what the total looks like, where you're getting all the money?
Yeah. So the 80, I think it's 80 pages. Actually, if I said 80 line items, I meant 80 pages. It would be basically, yeah, I'll be asking you folks to take a look at a, at a budget review similar to what you did. I mean, that's what we did. We went through and I printed out a whole nother copy of the budget.
Is there a way that we could get like a summary of where, which, which areas of service are most impacted and how that would impact our residents, which is of service that, that they will noticeably see a change? And that's the gap I have in my understanding. Maybe the council members understand it better, but I don't.
So in that 1.3 million, and I think that's where we talked about last week.
When you say 1.3, are you referring to the net drawdown with general funds or is there another 1.3?
No.
Yeah. I'm sorry, those numbers. Don, jump back to that last slide. Just real quick.
So the 2223108 were the expenditures that were, we went through when we?
So that's the part. So we've got this overlay. What I don't, is not clear to me. And I'm looking at the Alderman here, and maybe my Alderman remotely, I can't see their faces right now. Can you change the display so that I can see their faces? I, I don't understand what the, the proposed cut, what they impact. That's not clear to me.
So I think what you said in the areas, yes. So in professional development, you know, when Carol gave her presentation last week, I think she, she gave some examples of how much was cut out of professional development and how much was cut out of, you know, travel expenses, different things. I forget the different ones that she highlighted. But the, yeah, we can, we can get that detailed to you. And I understand though, that it's, it's going to change. Before we actually bring an adjustment to you and ask you to adopt it.
Maybe let me ask the question directly. If, if we were to execute your proposal, if we were to execute your proposal and the president that lives, you know, in a Villa Park neighborhood, what would I experience that would be different than what I was experiencing before these cuts? Is there any services? I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what's my experience?
So in that 1.3 that Carol had talked about, we didn't anticipate any service level cuts to that, to that level to the residents. What I'm talking about now with the reduction in force that I'm going to walk through with the departments and talk about how we can implement it, some of those examples that I was sharing with you is that we may not be doing street sweeping. We may, we may pause street sweeping. We may not do sign replacements for retro reflectivity in our different efforts to put 40 new signs for gender neutral on the restrooms in the parks because we're going to close those parks. I would only go out emergency parks restrooms. I would go out and do emergency sign replacement. We would probably not do right of way mowing with the frequency we do it now. We'd probably do it more like the county or the state and just do it twice a year. We would probably do more rough cutting on open areas like say in Riverside Park. More than likely, with the vacancies that we've got, with this hiring freeze that we have in parks maintenance, probably don't have enough folks to go out right now and do the type of cemetery groundskeeping that we've done in the past. And so I'm going to ask the park board to consider allowing us to use chemicals around tombstones and that. And I know that's something that we've never done in the past, but these are unprecedented times. And so we're probably going to look because we won't have seasonal staff and won't have the supplements that we need. We normally have about, you know, 20 seasonal supplements and, and that. But we'll be able to just, we're going to do that with the resources that we'll have available.
Okay. And I mean, I don't mean to steal the platform, but when, when you're suggesting that our parks department, and I think you said something about the library, the parks department is going to defer capital. What, what are those? Because if we don't think it's a good idea for capital improvements to be deferred as a cost savings because it just kicks it down the road, what, are they doing any service cuts? Or what do we know about that?
So what I know about parks, and they've got their own budget and their own effort, but they've been open to having dialogue with me, is that they plan on saving 144,000 by not opening the pool. They'll have some chemical and energy costs, you know, and that. But I think that's the net savings they're going to be looking at.
So isn't the pool, doesn't it got an expenditure of like 300,000? So we still think it's 160,000?
They're just telling me, I'm just relating to some of the, some of the different things.
Maybe Carol, do you know the details of that? I don't know why I was thinking it was 300.
Well, the expenditures are 300 and some, but it's offset by a percentage of revenue. And so the net savings, because there's usually a loss on the pool.
Oh, what's the revenue on the pool?
It would, it would be about like 100,000 short of what JD was referring to.
What? So the revenue is, is about 100,000 or 80,000? I thought it was 60.
JD, what did you say? The cuts in the pool are about 140,000 total?
They anticipate there'll be about 144,000 savings by shuttering the pool this year.
Yes. And so that's, that's largely the short, it usually costs more to operate it than the revenue that's brought in. So if we close the pool, that's the savings that we would realize.
I guess I was trying to understand because I had heard that there was some work that had to happen in the pool anyway.
I think they're anticipating about 12 to 14,000 that, that savings includes that though, because they're going to still run it with chemicals and energy to try and keep it operating because they, they fear that the firing it up after sitting idle for 18 months would be more detrimental than just.
Okay. So instead of investing 300,000 and losing 160,000, we're going to invest 12,000 and, and save 144,000 in loss. Okay.
That's what the director, I think, is going to recommend to their board. Yeah.
Okay.
And so these are some of the examples. But the capital ones, Your Honor, what I was mentioning is that they had talked about their different capital projects. You know, one, the Carson Spark playground that was going to be replaced this year, the improvements they were going to make at the, at the road up there at Riverside Cemetery, and then the pickleball courts. And what they want to do is just, they just want to delay those until either the next season or something like that. They, they don't want to eliminate any of those. They just want to delay them like eight years. And, and I, like I say, this, this was Alderman Kinnock, and I'm just articulating some of the stuff.
Well, I mean, I guess philosophically, I just have the same concern I have about our roads. If you delay the maintenance on that cemetery road, is it going to be more expensive in the future? I just don't know. So maybe we could, if the council would entertain this idea, kind of step through some of the, the big items and make sure that you understand what our policy position is on some of the bigger items, and then that you get a bit more framework instead of just kind of throwing a can resolution. So for the, I believe that we have a budget of about 6.8 million to the parks. Is that correct?
I'm going to ask Carol because I don't have that one memorized.
This is all Waldron. I don't think it's that high. I think it's 4 million something. It rings about 4, 8 or?
Alderman, I think she's including the capital favor. We've got about 1.1 something there in the revenue anticipation note. And then I got to pick up off 805,000 there for the insurance proceeds. So if you peel that back, that's probably there.
So you pull the captain's table out?
Yeah, pull that out.
And we feel like there's no moving on. Those are all solid. All that expenditure has to go.
They plan on being done there on May 22nd still. We're still right on track.
So 4 million. So what are they proposing, cutting?
Carol, do you have, do you have some of the line on, some of the examples that I can go through my book, I guess, and go through it. I wasn't, I didn't know we were, hang on.
Your Honor, this, Your Honor, this is Alderman Waldron.
Hi.
I, I, while Carol's looking it up, I'm sorry, Carol, to interrupt you. But what if JD has presented that we don't necessarily agree with? Do you want us just to sound off? Or how do you want us to present something of a different opinion?
Well, that's what I was kind of, instead of us just having kind of a random conversation, what I wanted to kind of walk through is kind of a policy, a consensus on policy so that JD has some understanding of where the council's going to be comfortable and where we're not. And so I was going to suggest that we step through parks, library, pension funding, CIP, overtime, I think is still not really addressed, and then incurring more debt. So I kind of wanted to walk through those things to make sure that we all have a common understanding of where the council is on those. And that's why I was suggesting we start with parks. But it wasn't clear. I saw the add-on, but I don't know what the parks, so if we, if we dismiss the, the 2.8 because it is done at the captain's table and there's no getting it back. So we got 4 million to work with Alderman Waldron. So that was what, but it's not clear to me by what's been presented, how much the park board is able to, or is thinking about reducing their investments or expenditures.
And this is Alderman Waldron again. Being on the park board, we haven't been presenting anything yet ourselves. Our meeting isn't to the 23rd. But my example in, in parks is that I'm not necessarily in agreement with shuttering bathrooms. And I'm not necessarily in agreement with going to the state's model for right of way cutting. And I'm not necessarily in agreement with rough cutting our parks. I realize we're down some park employees by having no seasonals, but I would think we would be able to shift resources out of the street department and maybe elsewhere to maintain that level of service. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
So JD, when you said that the parks are, you know, digging deep and doing that, what, what does that quantify to be? If they have a flexible budget of 4 million, I'm assuming that 1 million is already nearly spent, but?
So the, the number I was given by Carol and that, and again, like I say, they're, the parks is their own autonomous board. They've got their own budget. They've got their own expenditures and revenues.
They don't have a budget anymore because we're pulling back all our budget approvals.
And so I understand.
Is that not correct? Or do?
So that's part of what, you know, my recommendation was, as, as I go through, if you guys agree that you want me to try and capture 5% from them, which is kind of what we've been looking overall, that we'd have to capture from everybody that's within the general fund, then that's 529,000 and some change. And if, if you guys policy level agree that that's the, that's the amount that you wanted me to try and recapture from them, then I would have to work with Dirk and try and figure out if we can redo the appropriation ordinance for the property tax levy. He says it's a very thin blanket. He's not sure if it's something that we can get over us or not and, and work with them. But my conversation with the park board president today was very in good spirit. He understands that we may have to ask for some of that recapture. And so that's why I was suggesting to you that that's kind of the target.
I don't mean to belabor it, but how is 500,000, 5% of 4 million? Isn't that more than 5%?
It's 5% of the overall cut. Carol can explain to you the overall cut that we're looking to make out of the expenditures in the general fund. So 70%.
We can't hear JD now.
JD, you cut out.
Sorry, I backed away. It's 5% of the overall, and that's what Carol came up with as an overall, if we were all going to take a look at, everybody was share the pain yesterday. They have skin in the game, all that, you know, all the communications I got from the Alderman were pretty clear that they wanted to see the parks and the library kind of have their fair component. And so this was, Carol's in my way of saying, okay, that 5% is kind of where that comes together.
So 500,000 of the 4 million dollar in their budget. Is that what you said?
So 529,000 and?
529,000 from parks, 6.8.
529,247.
Is that, is that the council's, is the council comfortable with that? Is that the plan?
Yeah, this is Alderman Waldron again. I am comfortable with the 5%, as long as it's 5% across the board, if that's what staff thinks. I'm not necessarily comfortable with how staff has got to the 5%. As I mentioned earlier, on the rough cut, right of way mowing in the bathrooms, but I'm okay with the 500,000, 529.
It's not 5% of your budget. You understand that? Because that took me a while to get to that point. It's 529,000 of your budget.
Correct.
Okay. So is the?
How does that relate to the 5%? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not following.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult for me to follow, follow too. What is the, what are, when you say 5%, are you talking about 100,000 budget?
Carol, Carol, can you go ahead and explain away that, that 5%?
Yeah, I'm trying to find my, my spreadsheet. It was the total amount, I'm sorry, I need, my, my computer is frozen up and I can't get that particular spreadsheet out. But it was the total amount of their, just their normal operating budget. And if we could, if we could skip on, I just need to find, I need to find my.
Sure. Let me explain one thing.
I need to find my spreadsheet, but.
I've got the spreadsheet for, for the, the park budget if, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a number where I kind of calculated some net numbers on the total park fund. So if you, if you can just give me a moment, I know I can find it. Carol, did you happen to send it over to JD? Did you email it to JD? No, I did not. I did not. So I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. My computer froze and I'm trying to get it rebooted back up.
Alderman Waldron, I want to make sure I clarify something. Part of that 5% going across to all funds in all areas, that includes police and fire. And police and fire are 70% of the general fund. And so when, on my second slide here, Don, could you go back to my second slide, please? When I talk to you about, oh, okay, could you just move those pictures over? No, this is the first slide, third slide, I'm sorry. When I talk to you about that number of 1,334,460, that's because you have, you know, 500,000. that's because you have, you know, 5% of fire and 5% of the police is about 1.5 million dollars. And there won't be enough to capture that 5% from each of them. And so that's why I'm recommending unless we go and try and take back some of that prepaid pension fund money that we put in for 2021 and future pension obligations and whatever, then that's what it would take for a, in this scenario. That's what it would take for a drawdown in some of those general fund reserves to capture the police and fire portion.
My question is, 5% of what?
And that's what Carol's going to have to tell you because she.
No, I mean, what's the dollar amount that you're describing? If if it's, if 5% equals 529,000, anybody want to do that number for me?
750 million.
It's it's 10 million.
Yeah, where are you coming up with?
Why don't we give her a chance to get her.
No, I'm not talking about Carol. Where's the, where's the 10 million? Because then we have a rejection of. That's, I know, but that doesn't make any sense because I thought we were looking at 5.8 million dollar.
When we start tonight, I want, I just wanted to concentrate on the general fund. I, um, we have some projects, you know, the capital improvements fund, the utility tax and then home rule tax that are funded that. I know I've got those four projects that are going to come next week and we're going to talk about those.
Well, we're going to talk about those tonight, about what we're going to do at CIP.
Okay, but if you remember, you saw my email, I sent it out with all my internal communications. I want you guys to look at all that in its entirety. All those capital improvement projects that have been bid but not yet awarded. And those are the ones where Carol was talking about. When you look at her model across all funds, that's where you have that 5.8 million dollar shortfall. We're just, I'm just talking about the general fund here tonight. I think that's what, um, as I, well, and parks and library, where I was kind of told to concentrate.
All right, I'll, I'll just, I guess, unless unless one of the other Aldermen can explain it to me, I'm just, it might be obvious and I'm just not thinking of it right. Where's the, where's the 10 million come from?
The 10, the 10 million, that, um, the general fund reserve balance.
I don't know. Are we talking about 5% of the general fund reserve balance?
No, Carol, I'm going to let Carol, like I say, she wanted to get her work paper so she can talk to you about the the 5%.
All right.
Hey, just a.
Are we talking about the parks fund? They they cut their overall, it's the park funds across all of their park funds in total. And the net COVID-19 amended budget for the total parks budget is 10,584. And then if we cut it by an additional 5%, that's where the 529 comes up.
So I had, I had.
Park budget is $10 million?
Well, it's across all the funds. I would have to add up, because the parks have a lot of little tiny funds. If we just look at their normal operating, their normal operating fund, yeah, that's more in that $5 million range. Just a second here. Sorry, I just had it. Yeah, their operating budget is 5,600,000. So if it, if we're just talking about their operating fund, it would be about half of that amount would be 5%.
Okay, I better, the.
Does that include the captain's table? Is that why it's at 5 million something?
That's true. The 5.6 includes the captain's table and the pickleball.
Right, because typically their budget is about 4.
5 million. Yeah, so it'd be 4 million and then 5% of that would be more like 200,000 then.
What's the, what's the other 5 million that gets it to 10 million?
Um, I'd have to add up all these little funds here on the.
Little funds, Carol. I I think this is kind of revealing.
Actually, I think I may understand what what it is.
Okay.
Okay, so I I think the the, uh, the park operating traditionally has been about 3.8 million. This last year it went up because of the captain's table. So if we use somewhere around 3.8, 3.4, whatever. If we take 5% of that, you're looking at what, like $200,000 or 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 something? If you add the $200,000 plus the capital for the pickleball court, you get somewhere in the $500,000 range. That's the only way I can make the math work.
Yeah, yeah. I have the backup to it. I'm sorry, I just can't get to it. If we talk about the operating only, it would be about $200,000.
What's the other, the other $6 million that's being?
That's what I need. I'm so sorry. I need to, I need the back on my computer and I can pull it up for you on how we came up with that number.
The budget this year, the, um, it was, for the parks, it was only 6,836,160.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
The actual budget that you guys had sent out.
It could be, we had a couple of people trying to help pull numbers on this and I apologize. I mean, there's a possibility that the number is not pulled properly.
I think it makes sense if it if it's the $331,000 for the pickleball court and that $200,000 from the operating, that gets us the.
It does, which is the 500. Yeah.
Well, that makes sense of why it adds up to be 500,000, but what did make sense to me is why 500,000 is 5% of their budget. I don't know.
And I apologize. That might just be that we didn't put a good descriptor on on that line item.
Okay, so I guess what I'm looking for from council is some direction. What do we think of that philosophy that we're going after 5% across the board? Or do we want certain departments, maybe one department would bear a heavier burden than other departments that we have less flexibility on? Alderman Went?
Um, I I think that that's a unfortunately kind of a remedial approach to it. I mean, that's like, that, us as Aldermen as part-time people, that sounds like something that we would come up and be like, well, just slash 5% across everybody and then we'll get to to our number. But I want to rely on staff, the managers. They know that there are some things that are non-core that we're doing and there are some things that we're doing that we can delay and and push off and in those sorts of things. And so I I'm not super comfortable with just this random 5% number that's been pulled out here. And at some point, I'd really like to have the conversation that we should have first is, what is the number we think we're going to be short and do we agree with that number? Because that's the number that then makes the determination on all the other cuts and what we're trying to get to.
Yep. So Alderman Parker?
I would agree with Alderman Went, to the extent that I don't think 5% is across the board is a is a wise way of doing it. Because I think some jobs, some departments are more important to the actual running of the city than others, unfortunately. And so some departments might need to take a larger percentage. And some departments may not have to take any any sort of a cut at all because we've already been cutting them for years and they're at minimum staffing and where they need to be.
Um, so to address Alderman Went's comment, I think that the proposal that I recall last week was that it was something like a projection of 5.8 million shortfall for 2020. Is that still the number that you're you're addressing here in these proposed cuts?
In the general fund, we're looking at 2.9 million. And with, if you want to include all funds with the capital improvement fund and everything, Carol's still saying 5.8.
Okay, 5.8 million. Is there, Alderman Went?
Yeah, is that 5.8? I mean, from your presentation, I believe that that was with the assumption that the stay-at-home ends in 15 days or 16 days and and everything opens up again, which from my standpoint, that's, I don't think that that's how we should be planning things right now because I'll be honest, it's not going to happen. We're not even supposed to see our crest in this area until the end of the month. And to to be making budgetary decisions on that 5.8 million, I think is, um, is, it would be great. But I think we need to plan for the worst right now. And, um, you know, whether it's that 10 million number or I think when it's all said and done, it could be a much larger number than that. But I think to be good stewards of what's going on in Moline, I I think that number needs to be adjusted adjusted up quite a bit.
Would the council?
Your honor.
And who's that, who's talking?
Alderman Schoonmaker. I don't, you must not be able to see me.
What?
Can you see me or not?
I couldn't see your hand. I'm sorry. It was blending into the space behind you and I just, it's.
Oh, sure, I see.
Forgive me, I didn't mean to.
I'll wave the other one next time. Hey, I, my comment was, Mike led, Alderman Went led nicely into my comment. I I think we're kidding ourselves. We need to cut much deeper. And on the optimistic side, hope that we can, uh, you know, release those cuts sooner. But I think we have to start much deeper than we're doing now. And I I can't see doing that across the board. We have to be targeted, cut, cut a lot of, a lot of different things, including jobs, and start making room for some very bad downfalls here that that if this continues beyond what's projected, we haven't cut nearly enough if we're only looking at 5.8.
Do you have a, like, some place? Because I, I mean, I think I heard a $10 million suggestion that would be less conservative, less hopeful. And then I've heard, uh, probably a worser case scenario of 20 million. Do you, does the council want to direct staff at the $10 million level or do we want to launch at 5.8? I'd like to hear some feedback on that.
Your honor, Alderman Potter?
Yes. I can't see you at all, Alderman Potter. Do you have your video on or is it just not?
I think I have my video on. Maybe I don't.
Did at one point and now I don't see you anymore.
There you are.
There you are.
I got cut off for a while. Um, I, I, I agree that one of the things that I suggested was, you know, all departments needed to do a deep dive. Raised a variety of different ways, but, you know, we're going to have to make some cuts and some things and have to decide what are just essential things that we need to take care of.
I'm I'm sorry to interrupt you, Alderman Potter. I want you to turn your law for a second and then can you.
Or, you know, it can be put off.
Alderman Potter, I'm sorry, but you're cutting out and I'm wondering if we'd, we'd have a better, if we could hear you talk instead of see you. So if you could turn your video off, we might have better, um, better ability to hear you. So can you say all that again? Please forgive me, but I just couldn't pick it up. I think he's frozen.
I was having trouble with being frozen a while ago, too.
Yeah, could you try again one more time, Alderman Potter?
Alderman Potter, I think you shut off your microphone and not your camera.
Now I got my.
There, we can hear you.
Microphone on, I believe.
Give it another try, Alderman Potter.
Yeah, I've cut out a couple of times during this. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Better. Um, I I think, I think I agree with Alderman Went in terms of, uh, we're going to need a bigger number and and that's where we need to start from rather than the percentage across the board. And that's why I was suggesting all department heads, all managers need to do a deep dive and decide, you know, where, what can we start? Where are we going to go? What are we going to, what are we going to start cutting? Because we're going to see, need to do some serious trimming in a lot of different areas and there are certain things in garbage collection, for instance. I got to cut that. Anyways, that's my suggestion.
So Alderman Potter, do you have a suggestion for, you think it'd be the appropriate cut level to look at? Is it 6 million, 10 million, 15 million, 20? What sounds right to you?
I don't think we're, I don't think, I think that's going to be a moving target because it kind of depends on on where this curve ends up. You know, we could be looking at three months, six months. We could be looking at a problem to the end of the year. I don't think anybody has any idea. And I would, I would suggest that number's probably somewhere in the $16 million range easily.
Did you say 16?
Six to eight.
Six to eight. Thank you. Alderman Went?
I'd, I'd like us to give, I guess, would like for support that we direct staff to do a number somewhere between 10 and 12 million. Um, I I think that this is something that's going to be longer and and quite honestly, unfortunately, I think it it may be higher than that. But I think that that's should be what our target is now. I hope to God that that's an overestimation and we can, um, come back faster and 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 do some backfill. But typically in crises, um, you you typically look back and say, we didn't cut enough. I wish I would have cut deeper earlier. And that's when organizations get in deep, deep trouble when they aren't proactive on those things. And so I I think I'd like support from everybody else between 10 and 12 million.
Alderman Schoonmaker, did you have something you wanted to say?
Sorry, I forgot my, my microphone was off. I I agree. I think it should be in the $10 million range, but we should know what's next. So this is, this is what we plan to cut to get to 10 million. If this continues beyond a certain point or where we can project a a bigger loss, we should have a darn good idea of what we're going to cut beyond that that gets us to the 12, the 15 range.
So if we were to give direction to staff to look at more like 10 million in cuts and I think I'm picking up the consensus of the council that we don't want it across the board, consistent across the board. We want specific departments to be appropriately, um, addressing a portion of that instead of a balanced portion. Is that fair to everybody?
Yes, and your honor, I would add, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't need to wait until next week. Like if things can be, started to be cut this week before it comes back next week, they they certainly should be.
So let's give some guidance on that. Um, can I, can I get a motion to direct counsel that we're looking for a consideration of 10 million in cuts that is not adhering to a consistent percentage?
Motion approved. Parker?
We have a motion. Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Berg?
We have a second from Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on that guidance?
Mary, I have a question.
Yes, certainly. Alderman Berg.
So can we, as Alderman Schoonmaker just said, to make it start tomorrow or tonight, whenever JD is going to start this? But would he, can he bring that back to us next Tuesday of everything that he did, that he, everything he cut for the 10 million?
Yeah.
That we're not waiting on it and waiting?
I I think that 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 is something, I think we're probably going to have an ongoing conversation about this at every meeting. But my hesitation for Alderman Schoonmaker's plan is that I think we need to give him more guidance so that he's not cutting things that we are going to to back on later. So I think we still need to continue this conversation tonight. I don't think we're done with this yet, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Alderman?
I don't have any issue with the 10 million. I think that's proven and 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 minimum a conservative. I just wanted to give staff some direction that if it's not going to be a percentage, I understand that, that also to me there are situations where if you cut, it's just going to, uh, because police and fire is an example, it's just going to lead to a lot more overtime. So I totally agree with certain departments need to bear more than other departments and to keep that in, staff to keep that in mind.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're sophisticated enough that we, everybody understands that overtime is bad. Alderman Schoonmaker? Alderman Schoonmaker?
We need to address the overtime issue. There just shouldn't be any overtime with the, with the, um. With, with, with the change with South Park, there should be some, some police hours freed up, that that should help to keep from having overtime there and, you know, I certainly would put safety, safety above a overtime moratorium, but you know, there just shouldn't be overtime. That should be something that we work very hard to eliminate for rare exceptions.
I think that that's something we can talk about in just a second. Is the council ready to vote on the motion that's on the table? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 That motion carries. So JD, is that clear, that we're looking for, we're looking for 10 million?
So yeah, what I'd ask for, and I appreciate you using the word battle with me and that, so could, maybe if I could get a little bit clearer direction though on the Parks and Library.
Yeah, we're gonna step through that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Let's, because Alderman Schoonmaker just brought, oh, did we vote? I can't remember if we voted. Yeah, so that motion carries? Yes. And then let's address Alderman Schoonmaker's, because that's something I think we do need to address. Can staff tell us who's working overtime right now?
I could ask Chief Snyder to probably tell me how many people he might have on overtime today if he's got, you know, people off, there may be people back on, call back overtime and that, I don't know.
So fire department's working some overtime, police department, are you guys working overtime?
Well, I mean, sometimes overtime is unavoidable. Crimes, investigations, I mean, we're doing, we're very cognizant of overtime and I'm very prudent on trying to scale back and backfill as much as possible. We have, we have a female officer that just went out on maternity leave, so we've created a ghost shift and backfilling that with, as Alderman Schoonmaker mentioned, some of the officers that are not working at the mall, they're filling in, so we're trying to.
What are school liaison officers doing now? Are they working?
Yes, we're, yeah, well, we're using everybody that we can to avoid as much overtime as possible. But I think the nature of police and fire is that there will be some overtime. I don't know, I can say there won't ever be any overtime.
And I'm assuming it's the same situation for fire, is that right, Chief?
Correct.
Okay, so what would you think about council if we just understood who was working overtime? Because I think I was kind of surprised, I heard of the newspaper or it was a news article and someone just mentioned they had been working some overtime, I was surprised about, there wasn't in police. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Your Honor, I think if we, you know, I think a moratorium takes out common sense. So of course there's gonna be incidences when Chief Galton's crews are gonna need some overtime, you know, an investigation comes up, something happens, we don't want to stop that, we want those things to happen. But I think what would be best would be if we got a, a weekly reporting of how much overtime was being used where and why. And it doesn't have to be much of an explanation, but enough to understand where we're adding overtime hours. It's just gotta, we gotta have the accountability to understand why these people are having to work overtime.
Is that something that we can be provided or is that a lot of extra labor? Can Allison kick a report out for us?
I don't think I could do it weekly, I could do it biweekly because we don't do payroll but every other week.
Are you comfortable with that reporting?
Yeah, and with the understanding that we would expect it to be very minimal other than emergency services and of course, Chief just committed to keeping that down as much as he can.
I think it'd probably be helpful if we could get like this time last year, the overtime numbers as well. And so we've got something to compare, because if the, you know, fire departments work in 100 hours of overtime, when you compare it to 1,000 hours of overtime, you understand what the difference is. And then we.
I can always speak to the fire department overtime. They gotta deal with that.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
To the fire department overtime. That is generally driven by our bargaining agreement. And so we have to, by that bargaining agreement, staff our shifts with a number of people. And so what drives that is we have some long-term disabilities off right now, we have two people off on, for months on end for shoulder injuries that require surgery, they can't have surgery. So that's being exacerbated. We have, we have no overtime that is not driven by the bargaining agreement. We don't do anything extra. In fact, our overtime for tax layer events has been minimized for obvious reasons, so, but.
Chief Snyder, I think we'd all get that and it just, you know, if it's the same thing that, you know, three people on work comp, overtime equals, you know, is the reason for the overtime.
Correct.
Something that simple.
Certainly, and we can provide that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And I can assure you, we're not doing discretionary activities that are creating overtime. In fact, we've tried to be as creative as possible regardless of this situation. We're not, we're not trying to expend overtime dollars in areas that's not necessary.
Thank you. And then JD, are you comfortable with direction or do you want a little bit more clarification on it? I think the council's just pressuring against overtime.
I'm comfortable. I do have a question. Chief Snyder's got a retirement on the 20th of April and when you talk about the moratorium on hiring and promotions, he has a contractual obligation that he'll have to put someone in that command seat by contract and then he'll have to pay overtime for somebody while that position's vacant. So I want to know kind of when we work, start walking through this, if you, you know, want me to bring some of those exceptions to you independently like, like that promotion where I can show you, probably save on overtime, save money overall in the bottom line budget to go ahead and move forward with the promotion and then the backfilling to save that overtime. Do you want me to kind of bring those to you one at a time as they come up?
What's the council want to do with that? Do you want?
Your Honor.
Alderman.
Have we talked with the, the union at all about, hey, this is some unusual times, can you work with us at all or are we just assuming they won't work with us?
I'll let the chief, I haven't, I haven't had any discussions with them yet.
Anybody else?
Well, why don't we have conversations with them before we make that, it's not a decision that we have to make this week, is it?
No, I think, you know, we have, I have reached out to the union president and the fire department, have some off, off the table discussions, but nothing has been generated at this point that would be considered negotiations. I think, I think everyone at least in the fire department understands the complexity of these two and they would certainly enter into some discussions, but that's, that could be a fairly long-term resolution to that issue.
So how about if we, is the council comfortable with, you know, giving the policy guidance of no overtime, no hiring, and so that's the standard policy and then there's a communication so that we understand why that policy is not perfectly adhered to. So it's a report out of overtime hours or it's a suggestion of why the hiring should proceed in a certain position or not. Alderman, are you in? Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. The way the resolution that we passed reads is that any new hiring or promotions have to come here for approval.
Okay, so we already have that cleaned up. Perfect. Overtime, though, I don't think we're being that vigilant about it because we recognize there'll be some overtime. And so instead of approval of overtime, what we're looking for is a report out of overtime. Everybody comfortable with that? Every two weeks? Do a little motion.
Yes.
Someone want to give that motion? Report out of overtime?
I would make that motion that we get a reporting on all overtime with an explanation every two weeks.
Thank you, Alderman Schoonmaker. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, but I missed who the second was from.
Went.
Alderman. And you just question on that item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That one disagrees. I got an easy one for us. Debt, do we want to incur any debt in the $10 million expectation of reduced revenue?
No.
No.
Anybody, anybody yea on that? Okay, so can, I'd entertain a motion to direct staff to adjust the budget without incurring debt, additional debt.
Parker, motion to approve that we do not incur any debt.
Second, Schoonmaker.
We have motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Schoonmaker. Is there any discussion on debt? All those in favor, please indicate by saying, oh, Dirk had a discussion item. Dirk has a, the council.
So I want to be clear about, about debt. There's a possibility, I don't know if it's a probability yet, but there's a possibility that you're gonna get tax levying payments from both the county and from the state. And which case, you might need a tax anticipation warrant or a tax anticipation note. And while the debt, they're not bonding or drawing on the line of credit that Carol mentioned last week. So while you say it's no debt, I guess I would say unless we come back to you and approve it, so we can make.
Can't we address that at that time?
Sure. I just want, I just want you to be aware of the possibility of having to take a little bit of debt to speed because you're not gonna get your money on.
Would you prefer for us to amend the motion for, without, without?
No, the motion's fine, I just wanted to, in the discussion, I wanted to make clear that we may come back to you for a tax anticipation warrant, not because we're ignoring the direction not to have debt, but because we need cash.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Clarification.
Parker went.
The motion was made by Alderman Parker.
Thank you.
Yes, clarifications. Alderman.
Does this also include not drawing off of any lines of credit as well? I just want to make sure that, that we're clear on that as it comes to additional debt.
My understanding is that it would include line of credit, that sounds like debt to me. Was that the intention of council?
Yeah, no more drawing off of those, yeah.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a question.
That motion, oh, Alderman.
Yeah, I just had a question. Can we direct staff to have the conversation with the union about the overtime issue?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Can we direct staff, JD said that they have not talked to anyone from the union about the overtime issues, can we direct staff to have that conversation, just to see what they say about it?
So hold on, hold on just a second, Alderman Berg. So the motion carries for a direction to staff to not incur additional debt and then I think when we're talking about these types of negotiation things, Alderman Berg, we really can't, that's not an appropriate like public, public meeting discussion. If there's something that we want to talk about regarding negotiations for the contract, that would be handled in a different way. And maybe Dirk, you could describe that.
That's exactly right, Mayor. So Alderman Berg, we hear you, but Allison and Margaret need to very carefully walk that path because I don't want to be accused of an unfair labor practice here tonight by doing something. So we hear you, we understand there's, there are all sorts of ways to approach this and I don't want to have a particular direction for something that would be an unfair labor practice. So we hear you, we will, we'll report back to you as part of this process. Let's do it that way.
Okay, thank you.
So I also wanted to address CIP, I wasn't quite clear on what was presented. Are all of the CIP projects that we had allocated, so you had the additional four that haven't been awarded yet, JD, and then we've got maybe three that are awarded and being executed, is that correct?
Probably more than three that are actually out there, probably, I don't know exactly, four, probably a little over $4 million were the projects that are already started.
Okay.
But you have four projects yet that I sent an email communication out because I don't think there was, there was some unclarity or something, Dirk had called me the other night, Alderman Schoonmaker called me, and so I decided you could just see all my internal communications to see why I wanted you to not look at them incrementally, because this is such a big topic, I wanted you to look at them all at once.
Yeah, I just wanted the council to give you some direction on how we're feeling about the CIP projects in general tonight, just a vague direction. And so I wanted to get some feedback from the council. How are you all feeling about our, our roads, water, sewer projects that are in queue? Alderman Parker.
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 Yeah, I'd like to see us move forward with the, with the CIP projects. As we know, even if we move forward, we end up going behind on a yearly basis. So although it's a difficult situation all around, I think we have no choice but to move forward.
Anybody else have anything that they want to discuss?
Your Honor, Alderman Potter.
Alderman Potter?
Yes, I'll take the opposite view. I think that if you're a laid off person and you've got problems at your house and your roof is looking rough, you climb up and put a little tar on it and go, it's gonna have to wait till next year. I think that we should stop all unawarded projects and not move forward with any additional CIP projects. I freely admit this is delaying needed repairs within the city, but if we're looking at $10 million in potential revenue shortfall, then we should cut here also.
Alderman.
I think not all CIP is, is equal. When JD sent that out, I think there was two projects in which there were funds, 90% of which were enterprise funds, it was either water or WPC or storm and those are, our people are continuing to pay utilities. Now, some, we're not doing late fees and everything, but they're paying their bills and those things need to get done. I think that the discussion on, you know, whether those projects need upgraded sidewalks on them may be a conversation we may want to have, but I think for the, the most part, kicking the can down the road and, to your analogy of the roof, we have an entire city of infrastructure that we have to deal with and if you're talking about touring this and that, we're gonna have gigantic holes all over the city if we just keep kicking the can down the road. So I think we need to do this. I do understand the, the idea if there are some funds out of that that could be used for general, that might be a different conversation, but as we know, most, if not 90%, if not all of them, those funds have to be dedicated and have to be paid and used for those projects anyway. So we can't use them to pay for staffing or people who might be furloughed.
So just from my own understanding, I touched base with Carol previously about the enterprise funds and my understanding is that those enterprise funds have to stay within that fund. And then we've got the funding source of the utility tax, which we've already skimmed off the 20% that we can for the general fund and so the 80% that remains is restricted to being used for CIP. And I don't think any of the projects that haven't been awarded yet had motor fuel tax in them, did they? So it's just the enterprise funds, three enterprise funds and.
And home rule.
And the utility tax is restricted. So Alderman Potter, is that your understanding? How would you use that money if not for those capital improvement projects?
Well, Your Honor, as a, as a home rule community, I think we have the ability to change that policy. Admittedly, we can't use motor fuel tax monies for general fund things, but if these are utility taxes and other taxes generated locally, all we need to do is prepare the needed ordinance changes that would allow us to move that. And I think we should seriously consider this. At the very least, I would say, I understand Alderman's point that the vast majority of those other projects are used in enterprise funds, but. But much of it is, there's a half million dollars right there that could potentially be moved over to the general fund.
Your honor, I have a question.
Alderman Waldron.
When we're talking about this capital, and I actually, not all capital projects are created equal. Will this include that playground equipment at Carson Park? The pickleball, technically pickleball is a capital project. So we're offsetting stuff in parks, but we're gonna let everything else go? I mean, help me understand that.
Well, I mean, I was just making the point that we have statutes in place that restrict how to spend that money. We don't have an order.
I understand that part.
Okay.
Your honor?
Yeah, Alderman went.
I understand where Alderman Waldron's coming from. But I think it gets down to our core services versus our non-core ancillary services. While I'm a huge proponent of the pickleball and want it to be done, it is not supplying water and sanitation to our residents or roads. And so I think that that's where those differences lie. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to weigh in on that? Because I would like to give staff some direction on how we're feeling about those capital improvement projects. I'm assuming that the active ones, the council's not interested in interfering with. With the yet-to-be-awarded ones, what's the direction of council so that staff understands what their flexibility is on those? Are we open to rewriting our ordinance that restricts utility tax? Alderman Parker? Alderman Parker? You're on mute, Alderman Parker. Hi, yeah.
I'm trying to be a good soldier here and go on mute. I make a motion that we move forward with the 2020 projects yet to be considered by council that were given to us by Administrator Schulte, with the exception of the sidewalk program.
What about the sidewalk enhancements that are embedded in the other four projects? So there's sidewalk work in those projects as well?
I'd like to see us move forward with the projects as bid.
Okay. Anybody?
Second, Alderman Waldron.
Alderman Waldron, you had a second?
Yep.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Waldron to move forward with all the bid but not yet awarded projects. The sidewalk program's already awarded, isn't it?
No, that's the one we opened bids on today. So we'll tabulate that. I was planning on having on your bid the Thursday, but then I'll have to ask because when we take those quantity prices, we apply it to the $100,000 that's budgeted in infill. And then we bring forward those infill projects too. So let me know how, if you wanted to move forward with the $100,000 worth of sidewalk infill projects and not move forward with the ADA improvements and the 75-25 portion of sidewalk, then what I'd recommend is we get quantity pricing from our patching contractor that's already out and awarded, and they're already out doing their patching, and get quantity pricing for infill sidewalks from that.
So one project is $100,000 and the other project is $100,000?
One, you have $80,000 in your 75-25 program.
Okay, so one's 80, one's $100,000, and you're suggesting?
Well, and there's another 50 that we put in every year for ADA. So that one there is the one that they're talking about that I wouldn't bring forward. I would, we would stop that one. That's the one we've bid it open today. But what we do is we take the quantity pricing that comes out of that and we apply it to the $100,000 that's set aside for those infill projects for sidewalks also.
Are you wanting to move forward with the infill project?
Can I reread the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Here's how I heard it. Alderman Parker made a motion to move forward with bid but not yet awarded CIP projects with the exception of the sidewalk program.
How much is the value of the sidewalk program?
It's $110,000 of city funds plus $20,000 of, you know, that matching, the matching funds that come in from people that pay that portion. Then we take the pricing that comes in on that contract. We apply it to that other $100,000 that's in the budget for your infill projects that we prioritize. If you remember, I think we brought that about three weeks ago, we brought that list of infill projects.
So I guess I'm looking for clarification from the council, specifically Alderman Parker. Did you just mean to pull the $140,000 off? Or did you mean the $140,000 plus the $100,000 of infill? So the $240,000.
Well, I think it's, I'm looking at JD's sheet that he sent out today or yesterday or something, which is $110,000 of the home rule utility tax. It's the last line item. I was thinking of pulling that out.
And then if you saw my email, there's an explanation that there's another $100,000 that is in your sidewalk infill priority list. And we normally use that quantity pricing that comes in on that contract and apply that towards the other.
My intention was not to do any sidewalks. I think that is not necessarily a core piece of what we need to do. You know, we've done a great job over the last several years. However, my thought process is let's get the roads up and running, and then we'll infill sidewalks as we become healthier as a city.
So we'll just hold in reserve the matching, that contribution, that $30,000, right? So no sidewalks, no infill, no addition. It's $210,000 won't be spent, $30,000 won't be spent. It'll just be held in reserves, right?
With the exception for the sidewalks that would go because we're improving the streets.
Understood.
Right? That's part of that bid.
Yep. Got it.
Yes.
Okay, and was that your intended second? I can't remember if it was.
It was me, and that was my intended second.
Perfect. That was really complicated. I wish you could have explained that to me. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I believe we have two nay votes, one from Alderman lawyer and one from Alderman Potter. Is that correct? That motion carries. So just walking back up, we're almost there, you guys. Pensions, you guys want to give staff some direction on how they want to, how they should handle our budgeted pension investments? I think we have $12 million, Carol. I think that's the plan for fire and police, at least. I don't know about the...
I've got it, your honor.
Carol, you're on mute if you're trying to talk.
Yeah, JD, if you've got the spreadsheet.
Yep. So $5,922,816 in fire, $4,927,890 in police. The statutory amount for fire was $4,556,167. The statutory amount for police was $3,780,246. So the difference, if you want me to do that for you, the difference on fire, then we overpaid $445,808. We paid basically towards our future obligation. And then in police, $308,922, for a total of $754,730.
That's the excess beyond our statutory requirement because of our...
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Alderman Parker.
Yes, okay, I'm off mute. That's good. So what is the impact it's gonna be if we go with the minimum statutory versus what was it, Lauterbeck and Amen suggested? I mean, long-term, how much is that going to affect us long-term? Because I'm thinking if we can afford to put the money in now, it's gonna really pay off benefits in the future.
I would concur.
So I have to actually do the calculation on what that actual impact is. But yes, it's just, as you know, we've got a significant unfunded liability in both of those funds. So we were trying to work towards that 90% level that it's in 2040 that we're supposed to achieve. And that's the reason we funded it at the higher level.
I feel like there is an opportunity that won't come back. So we've got a window of opportunity right now when the stock market's quite impacted by this to invest and take advantage of that. It's not one of those things that if you don't pay it, you're in the same situation next year. You're in a worse situation next year dramatically. And unless we think we're gonna be fully recovered to bridge that loss, I feel like we should be investing in our pensions right now. Alderman Parker.
I agree with you, and therefore I'm gonna make a motion that we fund the fire and public safety pension at the recommended amount by the actuary.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on that policy? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. So you've got that guidance, JD. Now, we're back to the parks and library. And I think we just, I think probably one of the two, is it, would it be fair to describe them as subsidiary boards? Or are they independent boards, Dirk? I don't really know how to...
They are subsidiary boards with a different level of...
Sorry, Dirk's coming to the microphone.
So the two boards are different from each other. The park board is much more of a subsidiary board. And while the ordinances grant certain powers to the park board, they are held in check more directly by the council. So for example, the mayor alluded to it earlier this evening. The park board is previously approved, but it's no longer approved, and that's required. They have to get that. On the other hand, our ordinances and the state statutes and the structure for the library cede a little bit, and put more control to the library board than is in the structure for the park board. That's the nature of some of the gifts and other things. So in talking to Carol about the thin blanket, my thin blanket was about the library board in particular, where we have opportunities to keep the $414,000 that JD's got there. We also have the opportunity to do what Alderman Schoenmaker and others have raised as the possibility of getting to the bottom of how much of the funds sitting there in the reserves are actually just unspent money that was previously given by the city. You have control over that. If we did that in accounting and could pull some of that back. And then it becomes a question of working with the board to say, "Look, this is what the long-term health of the library is going to need. You're gonna need us, we're gonna need you." And then it'd be more of a challenge to them to say, "Here's the performance standard we need you to meet to help out. We need this kind of approach back to the general fund. What can you do?" So less able to dictate terms to the library than you are to the park board in terms of your priority. But in both cases, they do have to answer ultimately to the city council. It's just that you don't get to set it by yourself for the library. You have a little bit more control over the park board. Does that help explain this?
That does help. Do we need to, were you gonna say something on the Williams?
I just had a question.
Alderman Williams.
Just, I'm new. So it's my understanding, the cuts made or not made by the library, still, next year, come budget time, we still control the purse strings as to what they receive?
From the city, but they have some dedicated funds that they have exclusive control over. But at the, but there is money that you levy for for them, and so, yeah, you're gonna have control over that future levy. My advice is gonna be, given this coming, you know, six months from now, that the levy be for the general corporate fund and everything flow through that. There are some minimums that will have to be discussed with Carol by statute about what you've done in the past. But by and large, we're not gonna have money going into special funds at the rates they are now. Your language of that levy says for general corporate and special funds, it's all gonna be general corporate as much as possible from now on. But at the moment, there is some restricted funds that the library has exclusive, that's the word used, exclusive control over. So they have exclusive control of some funds. Park board has no such exclusive control. So that's the difference.
Got it. Thank you.
Carol, can you provide, oh, Alderman Parker, do you mind if I ask Carol a question real quick?
You're the mayor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Somebody recognizes that. Carol, can you refresh my memory? Were general funds used to address the mortgage liability with the library? Or was that all being supported with the levied real estate tax?
I'm sorry, you cut out so I couldn't hear it.
In the past, the general fund had been used to finance the outstanding debt, so the mortgage payments on the library building. Did that happen again in this budget cycle? Or is it all being funded through the real estate tax levy?
It's actually coming out, it's partially coming out of the CIP. It gets transferred from the CIP into the library, and then the library transfers it out into the debt service.
So is it funded through utility tax or motor fuel tax? Or what's the revenue source into CIP that goes?
Yeah, it's a combination of those funds.
Okay.
A combination of all of them.
But it's beyond what their levied allocation is, is my point. So to be respectful, oh, let me go to Alderman Parker. That'd be most respectful. Alderman Parker, you had a comment?
I was just wondering, and Dirk, this question's probably directed towards you. Is the library able to, are they their own taxing body? Can they levy property tax for their purposes going forward in the future?
No.
Thank you.
So out of respect for their somewhat autonomous independence, do we need to formally provide notice to them that their budget is no longer solid? Do we have to give them some understanding of what's in play?
Yeah, I think that we need to let the library know that they're not getting the $414,000 out of the general fund that you have complete control over. And that their future levy is in doubt because this is, we're gonna have ramifications past this fiscal year, obviously. So that their levy's in doubt, and they need to engage in a conversation with you right now about this year and next year.
How do we do that? How do we communicate that to them? Do we give staff the direction to share that with them? Do we have a need to mention? Alderman Parker?
I was wondering if, maybe JD, we had a conversation yesterday, but maybe you could share with everyone else. And maybe I didn't understand it completely. What is the library and their staff doing now?
The library staff's working up there, as I understand it. I think Brian's on with us tonight, so he could probably jump in and answer that question for you specifically. But I know that he's got a variety of different things. They've been doing some business support for Sally Heffernan. I don't know what that involves and includes, but I know they're scrubbing databases that came from the chamber, some that came in from our parcel mapping, some that came in from, I think, maybe the planning and community development group, and they're trying to bring all those together for live stories. But I don't know what kind of work that involves and some other stuff. But if Brian's on there, I don't know if he's one of those callers there, mayor. I'd like to just let him speak to it.
Brian, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Yeah, the library staff, not all library staff are working right now. But a good, I would say probably about 75% are still working in the building. And we're working on all kinds of projects from, you know, we're still taking returns and getting those put back up on shelves so that we're ready to go when the library can reopen. We are working on kind of reinventing, reimagining library services for a time like this where we can still deliver services to the community. We're doing everything from doing online programming at this point, online book talks. We have our first online book discussion group happening this week. We're doing a massive inventory project that we have not had a chance to do, and it actually works well to do when the building is closed to the public. That will help us save money in the long run. So those are some of the examples that we've been doing. We've even gone so far as to assist with making masks for the community. We've even gone so far as to assist with making masks for the community, so.
Do we need to have a motion, Dirk? I don't really understand the, you know, we made a motion to approve the budget. Do we have to make a motion to withdraw our approval?
Well, that's, that's true of the approval for the Park Board budget. The library board just submits a report that doesn't get approved. You factor it into your overall budget, including this transfer that you're evoking. One of the technical differences between the two bodies. You don't actually technically approve the library's budget. So, the communication directive is this simple. Frankly, I guess the, the protocol would be a message from you, Mayor, to the president of the library board to say, "You need to engage in a conversation about budget impacts this year and next year because we will look very closely at the next levy for the library funded."
Do we need to?
I'm kind of missing somewhat what Dirk was saying there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he was being kind of quiet. Can I, just to clarify, he was just saying that I, with council's direction, would approach that board president and give them some guidance that the levy's in the mix moving forward. But I feel like we need to provide formal notice to them that we're going to draw back our previous commitment to pay their mortgage, which is that 400,000.
I agree.
If that's the council's direction. So, I'm looking for, let's talk about the library first. Is it the council's direction for me to provide that communication to their library board chair?
That communication being for the benefit of the clerk that we're pulling back the 414,000 and that their next levy is in the mix. I got that right, Mayor?
Alderman Schoonmaker?
I think we still don't understand fully the, the extra money. And I think that's part of this discussion, the side account that's held with the foundation, which supposedly is excess, but it's only excess because they use the money that was given to them by us. And that's a little confusing to me, how that was hidden off the books and never really disclosed. And I think we need to get to the bottom and understand that.
So, I think that is outstanding. And in my communication, I can request that information and that will help guide us in our levying decision when we prepare our levy. Are you comfortable with that, Alderman Schoonmaker?
I am.
So, I'm looking for some guidance from council to me on if you're comfortable with that message. Alderman Parker?
Are you looking for us to make a motion to compel you to do this?
Yeah, so I have some formal.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to direct, cash, direct the mayor to have a discussion with the chairman of the library board regarding funding and levy for this year and going forward.
Is it withdrawing the 14?
And I'm sorry, yes, in drawing the.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Schoonmaker.
We had Alderman Parker motioning and I have Alderman Moyer as the second. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. So, we just have the park now. So, the park, I think, would be our, just some type of formal communication to them that we're withdrawing our previous budget approval. And we are encouraging them to look at their budget and guide us and what they can do. And let them know the levy's in the mix too. Y'all comfortable with that plan? For staff?
Yes.
Does someone make, give a motion to direct staff to move in that direction? Alderman Parker?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second it. Alderman Berg?
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. So, those were the ones that I wanted to make sure that staff understood where we're at on that. Of course, it leaves a big, huge gaping hole in the middle of navigation, JD. But I think we need to continue this discussion at every meeting moving forward. And we'll kind of pick away at it until we come up with a plan that's going to meet the gap and still feel comfortable for the community.
Your honor?
Yes, Alderman Went.
I've got a couple of additional questions if we can. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this right. In the presentation, you'd said there's about $1.3 million in cuts to spending already done. Does that, because I think from Carol's presentation last week, there's about a million, 30,000 of that was just the fleet. We didn't spend as much on salt this last year and then taking $75,000 out of the Form-based code. Is that right? I mean, basically, that $1.3 million is really those three things and then another 300,000. Is that correct?
No, no. If I can maybe help clarify that. We need, we do need to get you a listing of what the $1.3 million is. When we talked about the presentation last week, we were talking across all funds. And so, those vehicle funds, the actual vehicles that were cut, they were cut across all funds. Some of them were enterprise funds as well. But in the general fund, there was 176,000 of hiring freezes. And the remaining then was just all non-essential operating. It was travel, professional fees. It's a combination of many, many things. And then a reduction in our chargebacks. There is probably 400,000 reduction in chargebacks back to fleet because we deferred those vehicles for the year. And then definitely the salt, because that's in the general fund, that 116,000, the Form-based code. And, yeah, those types of things. So, I need to get the listing out. There are hundreds of things on the list that have been cut that add up to that amount. But the hiring frees and then those chargebacks are two of the bigger items.
Your honor, if I could.
JD wanted to.
The Form-based code, though, there was a $75,000 reduction on the expense side. And I also asked Carol to go ahead and make the $75,000 reduction from the tourism fund that was funding that. So, that, it was just a push. I didn't want to try and make it look like that was going back into the general fund because it came from tourism.
Okay.
Alderman Went?
Yeah, and so, I appreciate that. And I think maybe some clarification because that's just kind of a $1.3 million. And if we're talking about $10 million, we're, you know.
I got you.
We're already 13% and we don't know what all that involves. That would be, that'd be great. I think also, and we had had this, this conversation yesterday regarding, you know, step one or phase one, as I was talking about, is, you know, are our reserves at the right amount just for normal times? If we've got extra in some of these reserves that we don't need, that should be our first thing. I think we all agree that 90 days is the right amount of days for our general fund reserves. And so, I'm very hesitant to start whittling that away before we know that we've taken money out of reserve funds that are flush or overfunded or those sorts of things. So, I guess as we're giving direction to staff, the reducing of our reserves below that 90-day or below the 88-days we're at right now, I think should be like a phase two or phase three thing. So, I'd like to direct staff that when you guys come back with this cuts for the 10 million number we're looking at, it doesn't include spending down our general reserve fund below, what are we at, like 88-days?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd like to give that, that direction to staff.
So, Went, I want to propose, I just want to have my understanding. So, if you cut expenditures, wouldn't you be able to proportionally cut reserves? So, if you go from a $100 million budget to a $90 million budget, wouldn't you be able to cleave off another 10% of all the reserves too?
Well, no, because we're only making that reduction for a short period of time. I mean, if our intent is to make these cuts permanent and forever, maybe we'll eventually, you know, I don't think that we're prepared to do that right now.
Okay.
Because otherwise, when you pop back up, hopefully when things get back to normal, then we're going to have to backfill the reserves to get back up to that number. So, I think if you're thinking about this step-by-step wise, I think you make the cuts, assume that they're temporary. If you at some point decide, hey, there's some things in here that we're going to make permanent and our long-term spending is going to be reduced by that much. At that point, yeah, absolutely, you can start to reduce the reserve fund. But I think going into this, at least on step one, is the presumption that we're going to, we're going to cut, we're going to cut deep, but it's not going to last forever.
So, are you making a motion to, to take reserves out of the mix?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Williams. Is Alderman Went?
Yeah, and I want to make that clear that I'm just taking it off of the table for right now. I'm not saying, we're not, because I have a feeling when we get really digging into this and depending on where this number ends up, I think it's going to come back on the table. I just don't think that it should be on the table on phase one.
Can I get a little clarification?
Yeah, JD needs a little clarification.
That's for the general fund. But you want us to look, in this first phase, you want us to look at liability fleet facilities?
Absolutely. I mean, if we're holding an extra million bucks in liability just for giggles and we don't actually need it because we don't have a policy that we know what that number should be, yeah, absolutely, sweep that out of there. But that's why we're looking and have been trying to get from staff for years, what is our policy for those reserves and what should they be? Because since I've been on council, they have fluctuated all over the board. And honestly, it seems to be just at the whim of whoever's got the ear of whoever's doing the budget or how to make things balance out depending on what our revenue expectations are. So, I'd like to start there and get an honest opinion and a policy in place on what those reserve numbers should be. But yeah, if we're just holding money in those funds just for a rainy day, this is the rainy day.
So, your reserve protection applies to the general fund only? And you want proposal of appropriate reverse for the other funds?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on that suggestion or that motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. We're getting kind of lackluster, I think. We're losing our, should we do jumping jacks for a second?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Schoonmaker's going to lead us in jumping jacks. JD, anything in this area that you want us to address or give you guidance on?
I could be like Margaret, but I need a little bit more. I used, I used that 5% to just try and give me something to frame up for Parks and Library. And because, like I say, they're not our funds, they're not our board. So, could you give me a little bit more of what you want me to try and articulate to Parks? I guess, because I don't, I don't think I have a clickaway there. What you want me to ask them to try and do.
Does anybody have anything to offer? Did you understand the question from JD? He's looking for more specific direction about what kind of cuts we're expecting from Parks and Library.
So, yesterday, you guys were real good about telling me, you know, skin in the game and you said have them kind of share the pain and all that. And so, like I say, Carol and I kind of said, okay, if everybody was using the same percentage, 5% would hit. And that was something I could defend to those autonomous boards. So, that's where I came up with those numbers. But if you, if you give me something a little clearer on what you want me to shoot for, I'm happy to go and articulate that to them.
Alderman Waldron?
Well, like we've said, this is a moving number and it's a moving number for each department. So, I don't know that you could go in there and say, "We need 5%, 10%." I think you need to work with them as much as you can to have them cut as much as they can, both library and parks, to contribute as well as they can and continue to do their core services. We need to determine what's core versus not core. And if it's not core, I guess that's where you go. That would be my, that would be my input.
Your honor.
Alderman Went?
Yeah, I mean, for instance, with the library, with Brian's explanation, I think through that conversation, there were some things in there that were not core, that they were doing. And so, I think you need to have a conversation with them and say, "Hey, listen, we are in a crisis mode right here. This is the time. We've got to figure out what our core, keep the body alive is that we need to do." And ask them, I mean, I have faith in our managers. They're professionals. They know what's going on. And if we are coming at this and we've got a number of 10 million, we know that's a big number and they're going to, they're going to be creative. They're going to figure out ways to do it. They know which staff and what positions need to be full-time now, which ones don't need to be full-time and which ones are doing things that aren't core. And so, I trust them and you to, to make the appropriate adjustments to meet that 10 million. And, you know, and if you wind up coming back and you go through the whole thing and you only got to four and a half million, well, we know that there's more cutting to do. I doubt the first time you go through, you're going to wind up with $20 million and then have to go back to them and be like, "Oh, you get more back." But I think that I trust you and I trust them as professionals that they're going to have to make some tough decisions and then come back to us with that rather than this kind of just random 5% thing. They know their organization better than we do.
Well, and I think the 5% went away because it was 5% across the board and we've already pulled some things out of context. Yeah.
I was trying to get your turn.
I would say the same thing. I mean, we can, we could give you a number JD, but it would be a direction that is void of understanding the other restrictions you've got in the budget. So, we already know that we have contractual obligations with the Fire Department for staffing. So, we have more flexibility in other areas so that, you know, they may not be able to give the same amount. Is that fair to say, you guys? I don't know. It's not that we don't want to answer your question. We just don't want to pigeonhole you unless you need an answer and then we can throw something out there to start.
Nope.
Your honor.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I mean JD, I mean, basically, if you're asking us to do it, we're going to come in and start hacking things like with machetes. I mean, we don't have the fine-tuning understanding. You guys need to go through with a scalpel and figure what really can be cut and can't. You're the professionals. You guys are full-time doing this. Looking to us to come in with a machete, I don't think is in the best interest of our departments or our community.
No, and I guess I want to make clear, I'm just looking, Parks and Library, I respect their autonomy and I don't, I understand my role too. And I want to be diplomatic as I approach them because, you know, they're not, those aren't my departments. And that, so I just, I'm respectful of their role and my position with it. So, I'll, I'm sure they'll sit me at the table and always have, let me be part of their conversations and their effort. But, you know, it's a little different than the rest of our departments that I have control over, so.
I just have a question for JD. This is Alderman Berg. So, I'm sorry JD, did you just say that it's, Parks and Library is not your department?
They have, those directors are hired by their autonomous boards. And so, I, you know, I advise them and give them guidance and they use our, like, Chapter 24 is their personnel code and things like that. But I'm not both the library director, you know, and that works and that for their board and the Parks and Resilience Director works for their board.
Alderman Williams?
But JD, correct me if I'm wrong.
But JD, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can make them understand that if they're not willing to make the cuts that are needed to be made, and deep cuts, that it's going to affect them down the road. And ultimately, all roads lead back to it. So for them to shortchange or not be willing to make the cuts, when you present it to them, they realize what's going to happen.
Yeah, nope. And like I say, I'm looking, I was looking for some guidance, and I've got that. And like I say, the conversations I've had with them have been pretty positive.
Yeah, I hope they realize that.
Your Honor, this is Alderman Waldron.
Alderman Waldron.
To address Alderman Williams is, and I think JD touched on it earlier, I know, being a member of the Park Board, that we're aware of it already. So I see good cooperation coming from the Park Board. I can't speak for the Library Board, but I know the Park Board gets it, so to speak. And they realize that they're going to need a levy in 2021. And should they put their head in the sand, it's not going to help.
Okay.
Is there anything else, JD?
I got it.
All right. Is there any other this evening? Oh, Rod, yeah. Rod, are you on? Speaking of...
Can you hear me okay?
Hi, Rod.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're just very tiny.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Council. This morning, I received from the Illinois Department of Central Management Services a call for the upcoming 2020 and 2021 winter. In order to participate in their bid program, I need to submit our quantity of salt online by the end of this...
We lost you, Rod. What will...
It was just getting good.
Your Honor, if you give me a second, I can talk.
I can present. So we have an inventory of excess of, I don't know, 4,000 tons. And Rod's proposal is to buy 3,000 tons. We need at least 1,000 tons to get us to the level that we're above our average consumption for the year. And one of the questions is, do we want to partner with Davenport, or do we want to partner with an Illinois entity that has a lower rate? Which seems like an easy decision. JD, I'm not sure what the debate was there. Lower rate?
The current time is just 36.
Thank you.
So we just, the thing is, we need authorization to move forward with the CMS contract, and Illinois wants our approval by the end of this week. So what we'd ask for you tonight is to give us support to go, it's $58 a ton. I haven't got that email up, if you've got it.
$50 and 48 cents per ton.
$50, 48 cents per ton on the Illinois CMS contract, and it looks like the one from Davenport last year, their last year's price was $78 and 23 cents per ton. And I don't, but I can assume that their price probably is going to be similar to that. So we wanted to get support to go with the Illinois contract, buy that, like, minimum margin, I think is what he's requesting, where we have to buy, like, a certain percentage of what we obligate, 80% of what's ordered, but we can buy up to 120% at the at the price point. And then we bring it for formal approval to you next Tuesday.
So Alderman Parker, I see that you have a question, but I think it's a two-part decision, and that is, how much do we want to populate? I think the proposal from staff, Rod, we lost you again, the proposal from staff was 3,000 tons, but if we did 1,000, we would be above the average consumption. So we had a very high consumption year in 2018. It was almost twice our average. And so the 3,000 put us, I don't know, Rod, is that full capacity for inventory?
Are you back, Rod?
No, 3,000 puts you well above average, Jenny.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant the 1,000. Okay.
Rod, we can't hear you if you can hear us.
Rod, I think you muted.
There you go.
There you go. Not new, Rod.
Hey, JD, is Davenport bid theirs yet?
It looks like they they want to know our commitment. If I remember right, and you guys were, you were doing this alone before me, I think Davenport wants to know who all's committing and how many tons before they get their bids. But last year's price was $78.23 per ton. So CMS is considerably cheaper this year than Davenport's price last year.
Thank you.
The CMS, if you if you commit to 1,000 tons or 3,000 tons, I can't remember, it was kind of weirdly worded in the in the communication, is it, you have to purchase at least 25% or you have to purchase 80%?
So the Illinois contract CMS, we would have to purchase, minimum purchase is 80% of ordered amount and maximum is 120. In Davenport, it's 25% of the ordered amount, and the max you can get at that price is 100%.
Okay. So I'm assuming that the council wants to go with CMS? And I think the probably the debate, Alderman Parker?
I guess my question was, is this delivered? Because I know there was a question last year about, should it have to be picked up at the boat dock or something? And is this delivered to us, or do we have to go to somewhere to pick it up, or what story?
I'm reading this.
They both say delivered, JD.
Yep. And it looks, they both are, that was delivered price for both.
Alderman Waldron?
Yo.
Didn't you say something?
Should I say something or what?
Just want to make sure you're awake. Does anybody else have anything to say? Was that Rod? No? So do you want to, you want to go to, for the average, or do you want to go past the average? So it's, the debate is between 1,000 tons and 3,000 tons?
Can you hear me? Oh, jeez, this is pissing me off.
Yeah, we can, Rod.
You can hear me? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So the 3,000 ton of, what that does, because it's the 80/20 program, our minimum purchase would be 2,400 tons that we would need to get. This is a purchase that happens in 2021. We don't need to buy anything this year. And so what we would be looking at is the 1,000 tons that we will likely need to have an average winter, and then an additional approximately 1,400 to 1,500 tons that would give us the start for the next winter, so that we have that, so that we can do almost the same thing again next year. So we need that, that 3,000 mark. That's why that's there. That makes sense.
Can somebody multiply it out for me? What's the difference in the 2,000 tons? If it's 58, is it 58, 50?
Probably, what the, 116,000? Is that what you put in there?
Did you say that we must purchase 2,400?
Yeah, 80%.
$121,000 for 2,400 tons, which would be the minimum. You went with, Davenport, it'd be 156,000.
No, I meant the difference between buying 1,000 or buying 3,000.
Well, 1,000 tons would be 50,000 and 40, 50,000.
About 50 grand a thousand.
50 grand a thousand, so it's a gap of 100,000, if we want to just get in with nothing in inventory at the end of the next plow season, or if we want to have some inventory carried over for the next plow season. I think that's the debate. Okay, moneybags.
We're going to get snubbed.
Are you looking for a motion, Mayor?
Yeah, I love a motion. Anybody.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion that we, at the direction of staff, to do the 3,000.
I'll second.
From CMS? Is it CMS?
Yes, from CMS.
So we've got a motion from Alderman Berg for 3,000 tons from CMS, and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Rod. You did a great job.
Thanks. My apologies. I don't know what's going on with this.
You don't need to apologize. We can hear that part, though. I'm assuming there's no other of it this evening. And so now I'd like to turn it over to KJ and Jeff Anderson to walk through the Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Infrastructure Project Recommended Activities. Go ahead, KJ. We can see you, but we can't hear you because Don has you turned off. Don, you have reinforced mute. Can you talk now, KJ?
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Last week, good evening, last week, we talked about the streetscape project down in the Floresente neighborhood. And council wanted to explore removing $100,000 out of the Neighborhood Infrastructure Program Fund funded by CDBG and take a look at other possibilities of what we can do with those funds. So I sent you out the slideshow on Sunday night, and then I sent you a revised copy that corrected some typos on Monday morning. The only difference between what you're going to see, what I sent you on Monday versus today, at the end, there's actually going to be a map of the low-to-moderate income neighborhoods. So if we can forward to the, do I turn the slides or do you turn them? I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. So look at taking out $100,000 out of the NIP. As you guys are aware, we have received CDBG COVID-19 funds. We're slowly getting in information on what those eligible uses are. So we are working through that. So if we would take out $100,000 from the NIP, if we can go to the next slide, please? Thank you. These are some suggestions from the Public Works Departments, some projects that we can do, from asphalt, to do an additional sidewalks in eligible neighborhoods. That's a big one for all our neighborhoods. When we open up the round of subrecipient funds, that's one of the things that we get. And so three years, that's why we created the NIP program for Neighborhood Infrastructure Projects. One of the reasons that we did that, because a lot of our neighborhoods, they don't have a Sam's and a Dunn's. So when we write a contract with a neighborhood or with a nonprofit, that is one of the requirements. So we just said, okay, we'll just create an infrastructure project fund. And those kind of projects, we can do like a waiting list, a running list, and address them as we have money. So then we moved forward, and then that's how we did Hawk Hollow, too, just kind of creating a project like that. Moving down the list, we got some suggestions from Joe's side, as well as Tony's side and Water. But anything that we do on this page here, we would have to do an environmental review and bid it out again. So if there's already a bid in place, we couldn't accept it because the reason is, HUD requires that the environmental is done and completed and signed before the bid is awarded. Can we move to the next slide, please? Thank you. So then we also came up with some suggestions for the people who are immediately impacted by COVID right now. What are some programs that we can enhance there? Again, small business loans, open up a special round for nonprofits to apply for more public service dollars. And the other one is to increase the balance on the books for our rental assistance program, as well as our homebuyers program. So the two in red, if we did those, again, we would have to do an environmental and then bid those out, or not bid them out, but we would have to have the environmental done, and then that would have to be a substantial amendment for that, because we would have to bring those into our annual action plan. The black one there, with increasing funds in the homebuyers program and the venture assistance, we already have those in the plan, so we could add more money to those easily. If we can move to the next one, please? Thank you. Some other ideas that we came up with is proceed with the streetscape phase one. Second one, proceed with phase one, and scale back phase two, but still use the equipment that we've already purchased. We have several light poles, benches, trash receptacles, bicycle racks that are in storage at the contractor's location. And we need to decide what we're going to do with those if we don't do phase two. So we did talk with Public Works, can we bring those back and store them somewhere in one of your facilities until it looks right for us to do the project? So they were going to look around to see if they can find us a storage facility if we don't go ahead with phase two. And the other thing is to complete phase one and phase two as planned and focus the new COVID-19 dollars for other projects. If we can advance a slide, please? Thank you. So when we look at CDBG dollars, there's basically, what, seven categories, six categories there that we can plan for. Again, infrastructure's there, general administration, housing economic development, again, public services, with our regular CDBG dollars, that is capped at 15% of our allocation. Now, with the COVID dollars, there's no cap. So we can use all 470,000 on it if we wanted to. And then public facilities and improvements, and acquisition and disposition of real property. Anything more than $100,000 that we move out, it's always going to, out of a current activity, it's always going to require a substantial amendment. If we can, so these are, these are the criteria items that constitute a substantial amendment for us. I just kind of wanted to show them to you guys for information. Didn't really want to go through each one, but if anyone has any questions on those, I can certainly try to answer that. I have Jeff on the call, and I also have Tara on the call, too. So if there's no questions on that one, the last slide that we should come up to, I'm sorry, go ahead, should be a map.
I've got a quick, quick question. Last week, I thought we had had the conversation that we could take out 49%, but is it 49% or $100,000, whichever is, because I think the motion we did was 49% to be moved last week.
Alderman.
But is it?
That's correct. If you can hear me, when Jeff, Jeff got with me that next Wednesday morning and said, when he, he said he didn't have his book with him when he quoted that, and he, he said that he had to stand down mistaken, that it was up to, and he had thought 99,000, looks like Kay put 100,000 in her slide here, but substantial amendment triggers at that, or if the, if the amount is lower at that 40, over 49%.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted, I was confused. Thank you.
Go ahead, KJ.
And so the last slide that we have here is the map. If we can advance that, please, Don? Thank you. So on the yellow, anything in the yellow, we can do those areas. But say we're going to do a street and it's 19th Avenue. So let's say the track or the block group ends on that 19th Avenue. We can do north or south of that, but we can't do the other side of the street, if that makes sense, because it's not considered to be in that low-to-mod area. So those are just some suggestions that we came up with for you guys to consider. Like I said, we reached out to Public Works, we got input on their, their current projects, and then we threw in a couple projects that we were aware of, and so we're bringing it back to you guys for direction of what you would like to do with the NIP funding, the current NIP funding.
KJ, you had suggested one of the options would be to finish phase one and then to whittle down phase two, like do a...
Correct.
Phase two. I didn't catch what the dollar amount was that you were shaving off that. Were you going to shave off 100,000?
To finish phase one, I believe they're talking, and Jeff, please step in and help me if you can. We had a conversation with Darryl. I think we're looking at about 75,000 to complete phase one. And then finding a place to store all the equipment that we've already purchased for phase two, why we're hitting the pause button on the project, if that's how council wishes to proceed. Jeff, was that dollar amount correct?
Yeah, there's a little bit of variability, but I think it was in the 65 to 75, $80,000 range to finish some of the items from... $80,000 range to finish some of the items from technically Phase 1 that were wrapped up for winter weather. And then engineering provided another number that to finish Phase 1 and do some basic kind of sidewalk treatment work in Phase 2, fixing some of the trip hazard, code violation kind of stuff, but not going into the full streetscape could be done for $125,000.
So how much would that cut off of Phase 2? I can't remember the total for Phase 2.
That would be Phase 2, we anticipate, or the engineering cost estimate is $305,000. We built up, anticipate $3,000 to $4,000 and an extra engineering on the gateway, and added about $5,000 on to that to round up to the 315 number, but 305 includes contingency and engineer cost estimate, so 125 pulled out of that, another 135, or need my calculator.
Take you down to about 190, I think, Jeff, right?
That sounds about right. Well, 305 minus 125, so yeah, 80.
180. So that would trigger a substantial... We'd have to go back. Okay.
Well, that could be done because it's already in the plan and approved by council and HUD.
Yeah, I was just saying that if you pulled 180 out of the plan, that would trigger...
Gotcha.
I just wasn't sure what Phase 2 was costing. So council, what do you guys got to say about this? Do you want to give some direction on how we want the Florcente project handled? And then I'm assuming we'll have a completely separate discussion about the newly awarded COVID-19 CDBG money that we don't really understand the programming requirements yet. Alderman, where?
So if you're doing... So you have to do an environmental research on any of these projects that you choose to do. How much does that cost for each one of those, and then how long does that take? What's the involvement there?
For about 90% of them, we can do them in-house. We can really have them done in about two to five days, depending on how complex they are. For the environmental, we did for Hawk Hollow, we had a... I believe Shai did that for us. That was an environmental assessment, so that has a lot more steps involved in it. But for the rest, we can have them done in less than a week. Now, with the exception, the person who technically does our environmentals, they are out of the office and leased until May 1. But we could do them in-house. We have that capability.
What's the council think about the proposals? I think one was do it as planned. One was do Phase 1 as planned and a portion of Phase 2. And then I think the last one, KJ, was to do Phase 1 and not Phase 2. Is that right? I'm just trying to remember our options you're recommending.
I believe the third one is just to complete Phase 1 and 2 as planned. In other words, not scale back Phase 2. We're on the second option. We would scale back Phase 2, remove like the gateway element because that's pretty costly, too, the project. And then I believe there was a discussion on the colored concrete, the stamped concrete there, too. We can scale that back somewhat, too, but still completing the plan with some revisions.
I thought there were three options. Alderman, where?
Yeah, the first one is just to complete Phase 1, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, where?
If we do the complete Phase 1, do partial of Phase 2, we would use all the elements that we already purchased. We wouldn't have to store them anymore. We could put them in. And then next year, the year after, would we then have the ability then to come back and finish Phase 2 at that point?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And that would then also allow us to pull out this $180,000 to use for some other more impact, directly impactful things that can be used as more infusion for our residents?
Okay, so when we're looking at the current number that we have there right now, so if you got like 305, and you take out the $27,000 that's already assigned to the overlooked and blocked neighborhood or sidewalks, that leaves us with 278 in there. So are you saying take 50% of that? Is that what you're saying?
No, I was saying the numbers that Jeff said, there was 305, and there was 125 that finished Phase 1 and Phase 2, that left 180 remaining.
Oh, okay. I was flipping it. I'm sorry. I understand what you're saying now.
So I think that one, you put 180 back in the mix to be reprogrammed.
Right. And that's the direction I think I am leaning towards.
Alderman Berg had a comment.
I was just going to ask if we could go back to the slides, but I just pulled it up myself. Thank you.
Alderman Parker?
So if we go back and reallocate $180,000, did you say that the person that has to do the work on it to be able to get it approved is off for two weeks?
Yes.
And so if we were to outsource that, what would the cost on that be out of that 180?
Jeff, do you remember how much Shai charges for environmentals?
I don't believe we've sourced out the categorically excluded, which, as you mentioned, would be 90% of the work. If it's an assessment, it'd be in the $10,000 to $20,000 per project range. But I think we'd be talking, depends on the number of projects, but as Kay mentioned, two to five days per project, six to eight hours per day, and you'd probably, if we could get somebody from a local engineering firm, we'd probably be paying plus or minus $100 an hour for that work. So...
But that's only if we're doing a construction project. If we're doing the, for infusion of small business loans or for the rental assistance or anything, there's none of those costs associated with those options, right?
Very minimal. Most of what you just mentioned, if not all of what you mentioned, would either be exempt or categorically excluded that converts to exempt. And then you're talking about going from 1 to 200 pages of documentation down to two to five pages.
And those are the ones that Jeff and I could really do if we're in a pinch.
You know, I'm kind of curious to what the programming is going to come out for the newly awarded CDBG. Is there... How close are we to finding that out, KJ? You said some of it's in, but I feel like, you know, we'd want to know that part, what those restrictions are before we decided how to spend the extra 100. Well, how about this? Is it the council's direction to peel off $180,000 from the original budgeted plan? Alderman, where is coming?
I mean, that would require a substantial amendment. And I thought we talked last time that would be include four to five months worth of work. Is that correct?
Is that correct?
It's going to be at least 90 days, depending on where you guys want to place that money. So yes.
So, but we could take $100,000, reassign it, and with minimal work?
As long as that activity exists in the current plan in 2019. So like, if we were going to give money to homebuyers or money to the renters program, we can give a limited amount without creating another substantial amendment. It just kind of depends on what activity. Even if you guys would consider like the small business loans, that would require an environmental, even though it would be a limited environmental, if you will, but it still will create a substantial amendment because we don't have that activity as a line item in our current budget. So for any program, and you guys want us to design, if it's not currently in our annual action plan in 2019, it's going to require substantial amendment to move that money out and move it over.
Don, can you bring up this slide that has the non-substantial amendment triggering projects on it? KJ, do you remember what slide that was?
Third.
Third slide. Alderman, where?
So if, and I appreciate Alderman Moyer's thought process. If we hold out $100,000, just shy of $100,000, whatever it takes, we could move that over into the rental assistance because we already have that. That could go over there tomorrow. And then what we could do is we'll move forward with finishing Phase 1 and doing the limited Phase 2, and the remaining $80,000, we could go through the substantial amendment. It'll take 90 days, but then hopefully through that process, we'll also know what we can, the other programs that the COVID can be used for, and wait until we know that, and then file the amendment to where we want to spend that money. Would that work?
If you guys would take a look at number one on the slide that's up there, anytime that we were moving money from one activity to another in excess of $100,000, it's going to trigger that substantial amendment.
But KJ, if we're just moving $100,000 over now, and that other $80,000 we wind up not spending, or we do an amendment later, the initial taking out of $100,000 wouldn't trigger any of the substantial amendment, right?
I'm just checking my language real quick.
KJ, do you mind if I step in for a second?
Go ahead, Jeff.
And it may be helpful to refer to your slide that had the planning amendment criteria, but if we increase or decrease an existing activity in excess of 50% of what was put in in the consolidated plan, then that also triggers the substantial amendment, which we were referring to last week. So it's a combination of all the items. You kind of have to walk through each one of those. Hopefully that makes sense.
So he's talking about number eight on the slide?
Let me ask it a different way. If we decided to continue to do the Florcente project except for $100,000 that we moved over to rental assistance, we wouldn't have any substantial amendment, right?
I believe we would because we'd be increasing the rental assistance program by more than 50% of what's already in there.
There's only $10,000 in the rental assistance program right now.
Do we have any program that we have over that is an infusion program that has over $100,000 in it?
Our rehab program, I believe we... Oh, not for 2019.
You know, I think you guys are less concerned about having to do the substantial amendment than I am because I think we're going to have our hands full programming the new CDBG money that's coming in. So it's not like we're just going to be sitting on our thumbs. And I think we also are okay being, having funds in reserves at the year trigger for assessment, as long as we get it paid off next year. So we'll have next year to burn through this money, too. We won't have probably another influx of CDBG money like we did right now with the COVID, right? So I don't think we should be trying to do gymnastics to avoid amendment personally.
You know, on the page where it has the suggested programs or projects from Public Works, those eight things in red, we can do any of those items, and all those items we take is an environmental review. And then we would, could bid them out, award the bid after the environmental review is completed, and do any of those projects with the $180,000 that you guys were talking about, or whatever amount you guys decide to work with. So none of these are going to trigger a substantial amendment because they all fall in the scope of the activity of the Neighborhood Infrastructure Program.
Oh, so you're not moving 100,000 out. You're just...
No, no. We would just do other projects with, kind of split the difference between possibly doing up, finishing up the Florcente streetscape, and then taking a look at putting some money on one of these projects.
That sounds attractive. What does council think about that? Because that feels more appropriate, considering our circumstances, that we're going to fix up a sidewalk or an alley instead of putting a streetscape feature of a, over a street sign. What's the council's position on that?
I like that.
All right. Do we want to hone in on what specific projects is it, or do we want to give them a little room to figure out what's the priority and how deep you can go on that list?
So I think we have to wait for the COVID, the rules to come up for the other 478, and then we just prioritize the 100,000 that we pull out.
Well, it's 180. We can move 180 out of the Florcente and use it on any of this stuff without any problem. And then the COVID, that extra $450,000, is that what it is? Coming in will have its own special programming requirements.
You know, Mayor, if I may, maybe the council can tell me what their number one, two, and three projects are from this list. So go on and finish up Florcente as much as we can, and then have $180,000 to put to these projects here. But in what order would you like for me to address them?
Your Honor, I think it would be better if we maybe have engineering and come back and say, now that we know that it's $180,000, what is, what do they think is the highest impact, highest priority, most bang for their buck? And we do two, if we do these two, we can do, use the whole 180. I think, let's let the experts make that decision.
So I think if that's the position of the council, we still need a motion to pull $180,000 out of the pre-budgeted Florcente Phase 2 to be reutilized in these infrastructure activities.
I'll make the motion that we finish Phase 1 and do the limited Phase 2, which will result in pulling out $180,000 and direct staff to come back with a proposal on how to use that $180,000 on these red line projects on this slide.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Wind and a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those who can indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, KJ. And you know what I think would be great is if you get information on how that CDBG money is going to have to be spent, or you get information on when we're going to have our hands on it, would you send an email out to the council?
Oh, I can certainly do that. I can do that.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question regarding the approval of Phase 1 and the approval of the limited for Phase 2?
Yeah.
And I appreciate that. But so do we need to bring that back into the council bill for you guys, or is the council bill that we submitted two weeks ago acceptable?
I can't remember the wording of the council bill you submitted two weeks ago.
Okay, well, maybe we'll get with JD and see where we need to go with that. JD and Janine, then.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yeah, I'll remember.
For KJ. KJ, how are we on that homebuyer program? I know in March that we were looking at a waiting list. Are we still there, or where are we on that?
As soon as, I guess, we can get back in the office, those applications will be mailed out to the people on the waiting list. Council just approved it last week, and I know I had a couple calls from people on the waiting list, and I know they said that they've had some issues with getting their realtors to write up their purchase offer. But so we're trying to correct those things and get a process going. It's kind of hard when you're working remotely. We're working remotely, and most of the realtors are working remotely. But a couple of the people on the waiting list have reached out to me, and we hope to get that going very, very soon.
So we, did you say you can't get to the office to get the application? So we don't have the application online where we can direct them to go online and apply and so on and so forth?
We can get that online, yes. Just been trying to work through some other things first, but that's certainly on the radar to do.
Just wondering if they could just apply online and then have it submit, when they submit it, that it comes back electronically. I mean, we're going to be in this situation for a while, so... I mean, we're going to be in this situation for a while, so.
And that's a very good thought. I appreciate that. Yeah, I can certainly work with our support staff tomorrow and get that out online. And we just need to get out the letters to the individuals besides a phone call. You know, get them out the official letter to let them know the program is active.
Thank you.
Thank you.
JD, is there direction that people that are working remotely aren't allowed to come into the office?
I've encouraged them to try and limit their trips to necessary, obviously to slow the community spread. And so I, I don't think she's been directed not to come in, but to make them conscious trips.
Is there, just so that they understand their flexibility, is it okay to like come in at certain hours that maybe? I don't know if you're trying to keep some staff away from support staff that KJ was referring to? I just wondered what the policy was.
Actually didn't, I was making my notes here, so I didn't hear exactly what she said about her limitations. But it's just, like I said, it's been encouraged. Janine comes in one day a week and she and I talked, you know, about it. But the more trips in and out, you know, and that doesn't add the benefit to telework.
Mayor, I couldn't hear anything JD said. JD, can you speak into your microphone?
So I'll have to get with Kay and ask her what her limitations are. I missed what she was saying about, I heard her saying something about working with some people that are teleworking and her not conducive, but I didn't catch it all.
So KJ, you gave me the impression that you're restricted from coming into your office. What are those restrictions?
No, we just told, we've been told to kind of limit our visits to City Hall and keep them maybe once or twice a week as necessary. But no, no, I can certainly come in. It's just I've been working on other, a couple of other projects, but I can certainly get with our support staff who's still working and have her get the application online. And I can draft a letter and we can get that out to the people on the waiting list.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't been told I can't come to the building. I just told, been told to kind of limit it, limit my time there, if you will.
Okay, thank you, KJ. Thank you for explaining that. Did you have anything else for us, KJ, or are we good?
No, no, thank you guys very mu, oh, I do have one other question, Mayor. Regarding the, when the governor lifts the ban on sheltering in place, if we already have a public meeting scheduled and published, can we still do it with a conference call? If it's already been advertised that way?
What is the public meeting that you're referring to? Because public hearings are a little bit different. What are you talking about?
Example, like if we're having a hearing for a substantial amendment or for a 2020 annual action plan and it's already scheduled and advertised that way with a call in number, can we still have the meeting that way?
Alderman, oh, sorry. Why do I think you're an Alderman tonight? I'm sorry, Dirk.
It's my bandana. It's my stylish bandana. The answer is no. The governor's permission to do the relaxed, no physical quorum ends with his, with the end of the declared disaster. So even if it was previously published. But my advice, KJ, we'll have, for a public hearing, I would want to figure out how to do, as we do here, a physical quorum properly socially distanced anyway. Because as I said about the, previously about the remote policy, the course is forgiving on meetings, but they are already expressing across the nation their reluctance to go that far with public hearings. So hearings are different than meetings and we'll have to talk about how we accomplish that. That's a conversation that Jeff and my partner David Silverman, who's one of the leading authorities on this whole issue about trying to keep people safe and at the same time, check off the boxes about due process for a hearing. Because hearings have this sense of contest to them that you can ask questions, cross-examine and get to the bottom of things. That's why you have to have them. They're not the same as a meeting. So if you're getting ready to schedule one of those things, we're going to have to talk about having a minimal physical quorum present where people can arrive and put some of the due process stuff back in beyond just a Zoom meeting anyway, even if the governor's thing goes away. But if the governor's order goes away because of the disaster going away, we've got no permission to do any of this at that point.
Thank you.
I think that if you could please connect up with Dirk and just make sure that any hearings that you hold are, are not going to be an issue for us later, that'd be great.
I think that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so that's our informational. I now like to open it up for public comment. I, we do not have any public in attendance. Janine, was there any public comment that was submitted to you?
There weren't. I checked right before the meeting.
Thank you so much. So that is the completion of our business for Committee of the Whole. I would like to close out of that and open up our council agenda this evening. Will there be an invocation this evening, Alderman Potter?
No.
I'm, I'm sorry. Was that a yes?
That was a no.
No, okay, thank you. So we're now the pledgeable allegiance. And so this sounds like drunk pledge of allegiance because there's a lag. So everybody, we're going to let the people remotely start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that was so much better. Thank you. Alderman Scoobmaker, you're going to lead the pledge of allegiance, no one. So now I'd like to start with roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Potter.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
Scoobmaker.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Berg.
Present.
Your Honor, best approval of Committee of the Whole and Council meeting minutes of April 7, 2020 and the effect made since Committee of the Whole on April 14, 2020. Resolutions. Council 1050-2020 Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to addendum number one to the law enforcement services agreement between the City of Moline and Universal Protection Service, LLC, doing business as Allied Universal Security Services, modifying the terms for assignment of uniformed police officers to the South Park Mall complex. Council 1051-2020 Resolution modifying the City of Moline's personnel code temporarily to impose a moratorium on the hiring and promotion of personnel to the City of Moline pursuant to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency and its negative economic impacts.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Parker.
Second, Went.
We have a motion from Alderman Parker, a second from Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoobmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council 1052-2020, a resolution establishing a City of Moline policy entitled Temporary Remote Attendance and Public Comment Policy pursuant to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency.
Motion to approve 1052-2020.
Whoa.
That's exciting. Sounds radio came on.
Second by Alderman Went.
Was it, was it, I'm sorry, was it Parker and Went on that one?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on that item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Sorry, aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
First reading ordinances. Council 3012-2020 An ordinance amending Chapter 22 offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article 1, by enacting one new Division 7 entitled Registration of Certain Offender. Council 3013-2020 An ordinance amending Chapter 4 Alcoholics Liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 4-4110, Sales of Single-Serving Containers of Alcoholic Liquors. To clarify that the regulation of retail sale of single-serving containers of certain alcoholic liquors in original packaging pertains to off-premises consumption.
Motion to consider 3013-2020, Parker.
Second, Went.
Oh, oh, roll call, please, for motion.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoobmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve 3013-2020. Second, Went.
That was Alderman Parker for motion and Alderman Went for second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Scoobmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Alderman Berg, I think you're on mute.
I heard.
I said aye.
She said aye.
Thank you.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Council 4006-2020 Special ordinance granting a temporary modification to Section 28-3200A and Section 35-4218 of the Moline Code of Ordinances to permanently waive the installation of sidewalks for property located along 36th Avenue Court pursuant to an application submitted by Haversian Canal Systems, LLP, ORA Orthopedics, 510 Valley View Drive, Moline. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you so much, Janine.
Thank you.
And I now like to go into the miscellaneous council business and I'm going to just step around the room as if you were here. So Alderman Williams, do you have anything this evening?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Parker?
I was just wondering, I know in two weeks we don't have a meeting. Is, with everything that's going on, is that, is this a time to skip weeks for having meetings?
Um, I, I think it's a reasonable thing to do from my perspective is to, I think we're doing a pretty good job of keeping up with the regular business. I, I did want to make a proposal to council and so maybe this would be a good time to make that proposal. And that is that I think that this situation warrants a special work session. And I'd like to schedule that work session that would be a little bit further out so we'd have a better understanding what it looks like coming up out of the stay in place. So I'm thinking, we have three meetings in May, 5th, 12th, and 19th. And then what I'd like to do is do kind of a deeper dive on where the staff is with their recommendations for us to address the immediate impact of budget and then be in a position to have a conversation about what we're going to be dealing with moving forward. Like next year, what it looks like the year after that, what we're thinking the sales tax is going to look like and how we're going to address that. So the, you know, council, I'd like to open it up for discussion about, do we want to leave the calendar the way it is and skip that meeting in April? And do we want to look at having a work session dedicated to having kind of an in-depth conversation about what our policy would be regarding all of this?
Your Honor, I'm all for that, skipping the meeting in April and going in depth in May.
Alderman Potter, I concur.
Do you guys want to use one of the existing meetings in May? Or do you want to, there's one meeting at the end of May, one week at the end of May that's available, but I'm open to use in a regular meeting. So.
I'm open to using the regular meeting. Didn't we have one scheduled for a work session anyway?
I can't remember which one was the work session.
The 12th.
The 12th. What is the 12th for this special work session? So, all right. And then I wanted to suggest that we bring Mark Peterson in to facilitate that conversation, to give JD a little bit of room to be a participant instead of having to be facilitating it as well. Are, are you all interested in pursuing that?
Yes.
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 So I don't know what the funding is on that, how much it would cost. I had a brief conversation with Mark Peterson about it, but I didn't, we didn't formalize anything. So I'll find out how much that is and if it, it seems to feel significant. And I mean, more than $5,000, I wouldn't expect it to be. But I'll, I can try to look for a different funding source to see if someone will sponsor that for us.
Mayor, a question. Alderman Berg.
Alderman Berg?
So we won't have travel expenses because you're thinking he's going to do this virtually, correct?
Oh, yeah, he could. Yeah. I think about that. Which, so if everybody's comfortable, I'll give you some more details, but we'll kind of target that next work session to be talking about our budgetary, kind of long-term. But bringing up the virtual, can I tap into, Parker, I'm just taking over your spot. I'd like for the council to consider having our State of the City as a virtual event this year. Not so much that I don't think we're going to be in a position at some point within this year to resume having group environments, but we do have a void of communication to the community right now and that might be a way to bridge that void. I talked to the firm that we were going to use that was going to do some little snippets of video that were going to be played during the State of the Original Plan of the State of the City. And then they were going to record the State of the City. They have agreed to, for the same amount, do an entirely virtual State of the City. So that would mean that my portion would be videotaped and edited in against the other portions that were planned. I have talked to the Rotary President and she's been with it. I haven't gotten a response back from Kiwanis, but maybe Kevin, you represent your club in this conversation. What's the council think of that?
Seems reasonable.
Good.
Yes, good timing.
Does it give anybody heartburn? All right, we're going to mix it up this year. We're going to go virtual. I'll let you know as the plan plays out. I, I don't think that we'll meet the target of May 4th. I think that was the original plan for State of the City, but we pulled back all of those save the dates. But we'll probably do a virtual hosting of it, so there will be a date at some point. And I'll let you know once we get a little bit more of the details flushed out. So sorry to interrupt Alderman Parker. Did you have anything else? Alderman Went?
Yes, thanks. I do have something. So over this past weekend, I had an experience. I got a phone call from my mom that she had, she'd gone out for a walk, more people walking in the community, but she had actually gotten hit by a car. And she's 75 years old, so I ran up there and, God bless them. There was, there was actually a fire truck happened to be at the intersection when it happened. They said that she flew up higher than the roof of the car, but they said they were out there by, before she hit the ground. She never lost consciousness or anything. But I want to thank the Truck 12, which was Lieutenant Jim Van Boren, Engineer Carl Killian, Firefighter Colin Suter, who was there. And there was also officers that were on the scene immediately, Dave Callaway and Kevin Ott. They did a great job. I know they made my mom feel comfortable. They put a neck brace on her, got her all, all taken care of. I picked her up. We then took her to the emergency room. It did end up that she had a small fracture in her fibia, but they took care of her and they were great. And I just really appreciate how they handled it and thank goodness they were out for a ride and were at that intersection when, when she got hit. So thanks to them, I really appreciate it. And to all our first responders right now doing so many things for, for everybody, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing that story, Alderman Went. Alderman Potter?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer? Alderman Scoobmaker?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Waldron?
Yes, Your Honor, I want to personally thank JD and his cabinet of directors. Giving them direction to look for $10 million worth of cuts is a Herculean task and a very difficult thing. I just want to let them know that, especially JD, that he
I just want to let them know that, especially JD, that he has my support.
Thanks.
He says thanks.
Your Honor.
Alderman Berg?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. JD, do you have anything from staff's perspective? Do any of the staff that are with us tonight have anything? I'd like to open it up for public comment. We do not have any public comment this evening. Is there any further business? Alderman Gull, or sorry, Chief Gull, you're an Alderman too. Everybody's an Alderman. Chief Gull.
Mayor, I would be remiss without just mentioning Chief Terry Angle, who died in line of duty of the Hampton Police Department. Unfortunately, on Saturday, was responding to a 911 call, was involved in a fatal traffic crash. His Thursday would be, or his funeral will be held on Thursday at Estradals. Unfortunately, in this very turbulent and challenging times that we're living in, we're having to even reinvent funerals. And if you've ever been doing a law enforcement funeral, which I hope, hope you have not have been, ever go to one, they are something to behold. To honor the loss of a life of a police officer is very special and it's very difficult to have to do this at any time, but as well at the time of COVID-19 and social distancing. So we've even tried to reinvent law enforcement funerals and we're going to stage squad cars at Blackhawk College and do a drive-through procession. So you'll see a large outpouring of law enforcement on Thursday to honor Chief Terry Angle, who served the Quad Cities Law Enforcement Committee for 35 years. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief. I believe there's no further business this evening. Our meeting is adjourned.